Yes.
That was really, I wish I would have been there.
Yeah.
Capra?
Aye.
Here.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Make a motion to go in closed session. The city council discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Brecken?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capra?
Aye.
I make a motion to go into closed session. City council discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because the public disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
More?
Aye.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capra?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Yeah, I missed the second and the first.
Yeah, I missed the second and the first.
Turn to open session.
Dan did.
Second.
Dan.
No, I could not hear you.
Okay, that's all right.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I move adjourn the closed session.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ready.
Aye. We'll be back before 4:20.
Scott?
Here.
Capron.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ready.
Here. We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a bunch of proclamations. The city manager is going to help me. First, you're here for the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Commendation. Please come forward.
All right, I have a commendation for everybody here.
What happened?
And Bob has for everybody represented. It reads, "Whereas on Monday, January 18th, 2016, the celebration for Martin Luther King Day, Junior Day, was held at Bishop's Junior Day was held at Bishop Healan Fine Arts Center with students from Les Hills Elementary, Irving Elementary, Bishop Healan High School, and East High School participating. Whereas we extend sincere thanks to Mary Brown, Jonathan Rouse, Claire Saltzman, Taylor Ferguson, Janaya Rainey, Corey Choice Jr., Kendrick French, and La Perla Tapatia Dance Group for their part in the celebration. Now therefore I robbery Scott merit the city of Sioux City on behalf of the city council to hereby commend the students of the Sioux City Schools for their participation in the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Thank you for that. Thank you for what you did that day as well." And we have a proclamation for all of you. Do we have Kendrick French?
I'm not here.
Okay. Taylor Ferguson? Larry Saltzman? Mary Brown? Corey Choice Jr.? Jonathan Rouse? La Perla Tapatia Dance Group? And, uh, Kenny Rainey?
Daniel, before you leave, I wanna, I wanna say a couple things. Stand right there. Don't you move. Martin Luther King is a, is a very important celebration, and we have now made it a holiday for the city. So that will start next year. Thank you so much for all that, that you've done for this, um, for the celebration because I, I took it upon myself when I first started to do a Martin Luther King celebration. And if it wasn't for Daniel, it would have never got done with the class he did. So I couldn't have done it without Daniel, for sure. So I just wanna thank you for all your hard work. Um, thank everyone that's all, that's involved every year. Um, it's just, people are, they, they look forward to go into it now. So I mean, that, that's what it's all about. We're about to, we wanna celebrate. So, um, thank you for, for everything you've done. We really appreciate it.
Well, we wanna thank the city now that next year, we have the Martin Luther King birthday, and we're gonna really start to celebrate that. So thanks to the council for passing-
We'll be working on that. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we have an interview for the Cone Park, Tim Seaman.
Uh, Tim Seaman, 4910 Sixth Avenue in Sioux City, and currently a member of the Cone Park Advisory Committee. I believe I stood in front of you a year ago and said that I was one of the original members, and we were nearing a completion on that project to get it moving. I'll tell you the same two things today. Um, that's about all I really can expound upon. I, the project continues to move forward. I think we're closer than ever before. As with a lot of different projects, it comes back to the dollars and cents, and that's one of the hurdles we're, we're jumping over right now. But, you know. In the not, uh, not too distant future, hopefully we'll have a nice winter recreation area that was supported by the people in the vote, and people will be out there sledding and having a good time this winter.
Tim, if I read the, the information correctly, you haven't had full terms though, have you? On Cone Park?
No.
It seems that you've had partial terms.
Uh...
It seemed like, did I read that correctly?
I was originally appointed to a full term, I think, and then I was put into, I filled somebody's term.
That's what I, that's the way I read it, too. And there was a break.
I'm sorry?
There was a break in your system.
That was a break, yes. Yep.
Well, I can tell you that I'm on the same, uh, committee as Tim is, and he does a great job. He shows up at every meeting that we have and, and has really good input, which is a big deal for Cone Park, because we worked hard to get to where we're at right now. So, um, with a little luck and some, maybe a little bit more money, we're gonna continue on, and hopefully this winter, we're gonna have what we've been working at to bring forward.
You're a good guy, Tim. Thanks for that.
If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer. Otherwise, I'll let you get to the real business of the day.
Thank you.
See, it looks like a really impressive resume, but I didn't read the signature, and I was-
Yeah, I know who it is. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Items three through 16H constitute the consent agenda. You will consider these items to pass unless a separate roll call vote is called for by a council member. If you wanna speak on them, some of you will want to. Please come up as I read that item. State your name and address for the clerk, so it can be used for follow-up if necessary. If you wanna speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three, the reading of the city council minutes of February 8th, 10th, 16th, 2016. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions of February 9th, 2016. I have asked the staff, so that you all know, to look into cell phone, cellphone towers in the future, and I don't think we want cell to, telephone, cellphone towers everywhere where there's a lot in town. I wouldn't have had one where they allowed one, but anyway, you are looking into that and seeing what we can do in the future, correct? Okay. Five, a resolution setting a public hearing on the revisions to the administrative plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. I wanna go back to Board of Adjustment for a minute. Did we know that that was gonna happen in our new, 'cause that happened because of our new zoning ordinance, correct?
Sorry, what was the question?
You couldn't have necessarily done that before the new zoning ordinance put a tower where they put that, could you have?
They could have. They would have gone through a rezoning process, which would have been through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council.
Well, that's one of the flaws in your new zoning ordinance, and because to have one of those towers in a neighborhood without it going to the city council, because we're getting blamed for that tower now, and we have nothing to do with it, that's a real problem for me. So, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd, I'd wanna go backward. SBS, something has to come through the council. Well, 'cause the only remedy is to appeal it to the district court, correct?
Correct. It's a Board of Adjustment decision.
Yeah. I was a little surprised the board declined to rehear it after we sent it back, but...
They did open it up for any new evidence, and both sides, in this case Verizon, and the property owner, and the neighbors, had an opportunity to present any new evidence. And so they did open that up and listen to the evidence, and at that time, they chose there was no new sufficient evidence to rehear the item.
Okay. Thank you. Six is a resolution setting a public hearing on the annual... Seven is a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau Section 402 grant from the Iowa Department of Public Safety for overtime hours, training, and related travel, a true cam laser video cam handheld laser speed reader, two preliminary breath testers, and a, and computer software used for technical investigations of traffic cases, crashes. We don't have that equipment now. Or we just, as long as the state's paying for it, we're gonna get it?
As long as the state pays for it, we'll continue to let their money spent for the maintenance.
You guys need to understand, when you, the state pays for it, we pay for it. Do you need it, the equipment?
Yes. Yes.
It wears out?
Yes. We, the way they do with those PBTs on there is we retire to, we get to. So it's, it's a rotating stock type of thing.
Okay. Okay. A is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Pier Street and Sixth Street on March 2nd, 2016, to allow for loading and unloading of students attending the tolerance event at the Orpheum Theater. Nine is a resolution approving an amendment to the tentative agreement with Local 212 of ASME by extending the collective bargaining contract and salary schedule for an additional year. Ten is a motion appointing Jack Bristol to the Art Center Board of Trustees for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2018, replacing Doug Palmer. Eleven's a resolution awarding a purchase order to Titan Machinery for the purchase of a 2016 Case 865B motor grader for the CMG. Twelve are actions adopting construction documents, resolution adopting plans and specification for Country Club Boulevard Reconstruction Project. Before everybody stands up, the mailboxes are temporary, not permanent, number one. We bid all streets now asphalt and concrete. The council decides at the time before Ward what product we will go with, but we will continue to bid because it keeps the competitive pricing on all products by doing that. We do bid plastic, and we do bid galvan, or, uh, ductal iron on all water lines to keep the competitive nature of those products. So that should answer some of the questions now. Go ahead.
Renee Weinberg, 3905 Country Club Boulevard. My one concern with asphalt versus concrete is to make sure that, um, the asphalt is bid thicker than the concrete, because they're not equal. There's no support under asphalt. You know, there's no, and we're in kind of a-
Normally it's thicker and the base is different.
Right.
Meaning it'll last just as long. And for those of you that are afraid of asphalt, 28th Street, running around, uh, by the bus barns for the Sioux City School District, has been in longer than my street, and I'll take that street over my street right now, which is concrete. It lasts, if you have the proper base and the proper product. It's everywhere in Sioux Falls. It's not something that's unique. We have never done it here very much. But go ahead, Mr. Ellis, and explain what you're doing.
Yeah, Glenn Ellis, city engineer. We will have, um, seven inches of concrete in the bid, and nine inches of asphalt with the, the appropriate base. And these are based on the recommendations from a geotechnical engineer that has evaluated the soil conditions, traffic volumes, and provided those recommendations to us.
Our other concern is that north, south of 38th Street, going to the Hamilton, is already concrete, and, I don't know, as a historic district, it would be kind of nice with continuity. We're part of the project. We were kind of led to believe that it would be at the beginning, so that was kind of a surprise that that came up. So I wanted you to know that. Also, um, our concern on the, uh, traffic speed on the, the street and the additional 300-person survey that was done, um, one of our board members, um, requested a speed survey. It was done from the 3rd until the 13th of 2015. I wasn't even aware that it was being done, but it was. The average speed is 37 miles an hour. This is on a street that's narrower than the new one is gonna be, four feet wider, and it's full of potholes. Um...
So, let me understand, Renee, do you want?
We want, we want something to slow the speed on Country Club Boulevard.
And what are you-
And the variable speed limit signs to inform motorists what their speed will be?
Well, I personally live on Country Club Boulevard, and I have witnessed kids drag racing on Country Club, and it is now gonna be wider, flatter, no potholes. The, um, there were, there were 5,500 people that were going just five miles an hour. There were 2,900 people that were going 36 to 40 miles an hour. There were 545 people that were going 41 to 45 miles an hour. This was in a two-week period in November, on a pothole street that's four feet narrower. So this is a huge concern, and I think this needs to be re-investigated, as far as, at least there being stop signs.
Why can't?
It's gonna be a drag race.
When we did, uh, when we did, uh, the neighborhood up here in Heights, it naturally, I know it's not flat, and I know it's not, I know-
Not flat, and it has curves.
But, you know, we put turnarounds and those sort of things.
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we do something?
I can't speak for the Heights. Um, as Renee had indicated, we did do a survey. So we wanted to get a feel from the neighborhood. There's, we sent out over 350 notices for all the residents that use Country Club, whether that's the only way to get to their home, or it's one of the options. And so we did a survey, asked them if they wanted, because we had heard from some of the residents on Country Club that they wanted us to install traffic circles. So we did some engineering on the circles. We also looked at traffic islands, because that's what's currently installed near this new school. So in the survey, we requested, uh, whether they would want circles, islands, or nothing. And 50% of the respondents, we got over 100 respondents, so we got over about a third to respond, which is very unusual to get at that high. But half of the respondents said to do nothing, and then 25% to do, said to do circles, and then 25% said they wanted islands.
I would like to speak to that also.
50% want, and 50% don't.
But I also wanna speak-
To do something, yeah.
I also wanna speak to that, because Country Club Boulevard Association did our own survey, and we have 80-plus people that live on Country Club. We had over 50% response. Those over 50% responses said they wanted traffic circles or stop signs. We wanted something specifically to stop or slow the traffic. I believe that most of the people, when this second survey was sent out, were so disgusted with the fact that we haven't gotten any response helping us with this issue, that they didn't even respond to that survey. That's why they had a third response. We had over 50%. So I think our survey should have more weight than the second survey. That's just my response as the secretary treasurer, I'm not the treasurer, I'm the secretary of the homeowners association. So, um, it is a huge concern, and this speed study pretty much shows that we have a problem.
Your, your survey again, you said, you sent out 80 surveys, 40 respondents, and of the 40 respondents-
We had over 50 respondents. We had over 50%.
50, well, okay, so that, that's why I said 80 and 40, but-
Yeah.
Of the 50% who responded-
They wanted-
They wanted what now?
Either traffic circles or stop signs.
Or stop signs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Irving Jensen. I live at 4320 Perry Way. I would like to respond a little bit to what Renee said. The city, what, what the city sent out, they sent to the whole area, not just on Country Club. I got one of the surveys. I don't live on Country Club. I think the majority, what Renee was trying to point out, the majority of the people that live on the street responded. They all pretty much want some sort of, something to slow down traffic. I'm not 100% in favor of, but traffic circles, meeting, something that would slow traffic down. They have something by the Hoover School, which I think has been semi-effective there. Um...
Well, you still go back to, I'm not very smart in math, but 50% don't want anything, even if you do a wide survey. And 25% want something, and 25% want something else, which means 50% of the people want, still want something, so we err on the side of the 50%.
Yeah, and I guess for my-
I mean, it's still 50/50.
Right. From my perspective, if we did the circles, then we would, 75% would be not getting what they wanted. So if we did the circles, only 25% of the respondents would get what they want, 75 would, would not be.
Well, and God knows how difficult it is to ever put a stop sign in this community. Glenn? It's close to an act of Congress or an irritated mayor and city, and city manager, the last time I checked.
Glenn, I think if you'd run a survey on the recipients that live on Country Club Boulevard, that have seen how people speed, send them a copy of that survey, of the speed survey. They would want something to slow that traffic down for the protection of their children. We've got schools, we're gonna have a new school. I just think, uh, we can't let the traffic run freely.
Well, when we evaluated that same study, we had, or the survey, we looked at the properties that responded that live on Country Club, and 30%, a third of them said they wanted circles, a third of them said they wanted islands, and a third of them said do nothing. So, again, we didn't have a clear majority yes. Majority said they wanted to do something.
Two-thirds want something, that's all I'm saying.
But again, you fall back to-
Two-thirds want something.
Two-thirds would not be getting what they wanted, so...
I'd like to give you a 10 cents worth here. Uh, my name's Dwight Rohrholm. I live at 4431 Country Club Boulevard, and I was the one that initiated that speed study. I walked that every day, four times, and, you know, you're pretty close to traffic, and I know people are driving over the speed limit. I was shocked when I saw the results. 37, I've seen people go through, gotta be 50 miles an hour, when I'm out walking the dog at around 5, 6 o'clock. And, uh, you know, when you get an average 80, 85 percentile of traffic at 37 miles an hour, seven miles over a posted speed limit in a residential neighborhood, something has to be done. And I really think traffic circles, medians are no good. Traffic signs will not meet warrants. What you're gonna do is you're gonna stop people at a traffic sign, if they stop at a stop sign, and then they're gonna speed up as fast as they can to make up the time they've lost. That seems to be the scenario with traffic signs, or stop signs, and they won't meet traffic engineering warrants anyways. You know, it, it's just not a legal use of the, of the signs, a good engineering use. Traffic circles will slow people down. They use them in Iowa City area on residential streets. They use them in Johnson. I was just getting into it, uh, to use traffic circles to manage speed and, uh, also eliminate stop signs at intersections, four-way stops. It, it, in some places, you can't do it, but, uh, I think we have, we've got 80-foot of right-of-way out there, so there oughta be a way to get some traffic circles out there to help control the forward speed of vehicles.
Dwight didn't explain himself. He is a highway engineer.
Yeah.
Iowa DOT, well experienced in these matters, and, um...
I just wanna say, I'm, 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 I don't know why we have all these people here- I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I don't know why we have all these people here, and I'm not being critical, you're here because you're. I'm frustrated, because here we are again, getting ready to approve plans and specifications, and we have all the neighbors in the chamber, which means we didn't do a very good job with our consulting engineer, Dan, I'm sorry I said that, but it's the truth. Why are we here? Why, why weren't all these things worked out? Why, I mean, mailboxes, why wasn't it better explained even what we're talking about?
We, we had a public meeting in October, and the room was pretty much, it was fuller than this of those 300-plus that we did invite. And I did receive a lot of positive feedback that, to do nothing and to, you know, make sure we're doing it right. You know, it is one of these sticky situations where we want to like, make sure we're looking at safety, but the circles themselves aren't going to eliminate the speeding. Just like the stop signs, people will slow down in between, or speed up in between to make up the speed. They would be doing that on the circles as well. But the feedback that we provided at that meeting was the same feedback going forward based on the study results. And, and so that's where we're at. The information that we have provided has been consistent. I know that we met with the, the association group on Country Club a number of times, where we talked about the traffic circles or the islands. And I think if we were to do either/or, we may have this same room full of the other side of the fence of opposition. So, I mean, I guess it's just one of those, what do we do? And took, the circles themselves, and I can have Brian explain a little bit more about the concerns with the circles. We still had to provide a design that allows the passage of emergency vehicles, which has additional paving in the intersection than a normal intersection would, which then creates additional potential left-turn conflicts as people coming out of the side streets may not follow the counterclockwise direction that they should be going around the circle as opposed, when they would make that left turn from the side, they would just take a quick left and, and come into opposing traffic that way. So there'd be a lot of additional pavement, and people would do, they'd have pretty much a lot of room to do what they need to do to get through there. We don't know if it would truly throw, slow down the speeds, but I don't know if you have any additional feedback.
Yeah, we, Brian Wells with DGR Engineering, 6115 Whispering Creek Drive. We looked at input, we took input from the association as far as trying to slow traffic down using the traffic circles. It does create more paving, so you, you know, you're going to have to get the fire trucks through, the, the bigger trucks through. So we, we took that into account, and we came up with the concept to add like a rollover paving. You'd have like a roll curb there that bigger trucks would have to, could roll over, but cars would likely swerve around. So that was a concept that we sent out as part of the survey. And just to recap with a, with the survey the city sent out, 103 responses. There was 33 that had Country Club Boulevard addresses. Eight properties wanted islands, 10 properties wanted circles, and 15 indicated none. There was 32 responses that did not include an address, so we don't know where they are, but nine wanted islands, seven wanted circles, 16 wanted none. And the responses of, of the people in the surrounding streets, Perry Way, Manor Circle, West Kings Highway, Red Bridge Road, Orchard, that connect the Country Club Boulevard and basically have to use it to get to and from their house, there was 39 responses. Four wanted islands, six wanted circles, and 29 wanted, wanted nothing. So.
Of course, they don't want anything. I understand that. We all understand that. Nobody would want one up by my house if they had to drive to Northern Junior every day, but I'd like them, because they go 50 miles an hour past my house.
Thing in 60 that don't want anything, based on the 103 responses.
That doesn't include.
They're off Country Club.
They're off Country Club.
Right, right.
I'm talking the people on Country Club.
Right.
More than 50% of people want something done. That's my point.
It probably would be appropriate to consider the people off of Country Club too, though, because the traffic study information.
Why, why would you consider them?
Well, because there's 1,800 people who use that roadway.
Why would you consider them when it comes to speed? They're not the ones that are going to have a car in their front yard because you don't slow the traffic down.
I, I'm sure you're right. Speed causes accidents. I'm just saying there are 1,800 vehicles a day that travel Country Club Boulevard, so it was appropriate. Glenn initially sent out 300 surveys, and it would be appropriate to broaden the notification.
There are lots of cars that go by my house every day. I'd like them to slow down. I'd like the speed limit to be slower on my street. It's not going to happen. And they, and, but would you tell me that I should consider everybody in Leeds that drives to North High and the people that live there that we've had cars in our front yards shouldn't be the ones that the primary focus of what you're doing on a project? I would hope not.
Well, I can tell you, probably Glenn can confirm, if, if 1,800 vehicles are using it on daily basis and the average speed is 37 miles an hour, and, and it's to the 85th percentile, you know what? IDOT probably, and Dwight might have an opinion on this too, IDOT's liable to recommend it going up to 35 miles an hour, because that's what the average speed is. It happened up on Cheyenne Boulevard.
Well, we're going to hire, we're going to hire two more policemen to do traffic.
This is more of a residential area than it is on, well, Cheyenne Boulevard is not a res, it's a residential area as well.
Yes.
You know, and I.
That's true now.
You know.
It's true.
If, if you, with some of the logic, would somebody think if I lowered it to 25 miles an hour, the average speed would be 30? You know darn well that's not going to happen.
Nope.
If you've ever driven that route with the power poles and the mailboxes and everything that's, and even the, the condition of the pavement, people are still driving 37 and over that. You put a new route in there, and you're going to widen it a little bit, not a whole lot, but the power poles are going to be, the speed is going to pick up. And 35 an hour, miles an hour, and that, basically, it's a dead-end street. Country Club Boulevard is basically a dead-end street. It doesn't go anywhere. If you take, it goes to the end, and then maybe you've got Kings Highway is another one. So basically, it's a, it's a rural street, or not a rural, urban street, you know, just residential street. So I, I really think something needs to be done to deal with the speed of the traffic. It's inappropriate that that happened on a street like that. Or you have the police come out there and monitor the traffic and start handing out tickets. And that's not a good use of our officers at all. And if people, you know, drivers license is a privilege, not a right, you know, and I hate to see people get tickets and it puts on their insurance, you know, or something like that. Maybe speed down, put a drop curb or a battered curb through, it can make it, even a hook-and-ladder truck can get through. Probably the biggest unit we've got on that street is, there's 18 wheelers that come out when they're taking corn out of the fields. Maybe embargo that and not allow those. They're going to have a heck of a time with a traffic circle, but maybe they ought to use straight axle trucks to get it through or something like that. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot of sensitivity about the speed on this street. I think you need to understand that.
I'm surprised someone hasn't gotten hurt.
And we need to do something about it.
Or worse.
And there's a lot of people that all they care about is driving through and getting to point A to point B. They don't give a hoot about how fast they drive through until they get a ticket or they get something that's going to have to.
So could you put a roundabout in there?
Pardon me?
Could you, could you do a roundabout?
Well, basically, a traffic circle is a roundabout.
So that is, I mean, they'd have to slow down. There wouldn't be, be any choice.
You have to slow down, and you've got full lane width, you should have full lane width going through there. You know, it wouldn't have to be a circle, it could be an ellipse. You could design it a little easier to accommodate driveways that might be impacted.
Well, you know what, see, to me, I, we already got the answer. I don't know why we're sitting up here arguing about it.
Well, let's hear Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, Bob Gibson, 4323 Country Club. Where a lot of us have concern in this whole thing, you know, when this street construction was presented to us three years ago or so, we were told, you know, that we would have input, you know, we were invited to take ownership in the project, you know, we were told, you know, figure out what you would like, what you would like to see. We want to make this neighborhood unique. So we went to the prop, you know, to the trouble of incorporating, you know, making a board. We even hired an attorney to make sure that everything we did was on the up and up, and all the Ts were crossed and the Is dotted. And so the survey that went out was for the residents of the street. We took it very seriously. We took all of the results seriously, presented it to the city, and at that point, you know, the majority wanted something done about speeding and, and traffic. Traffic circles seemed to be the most popular, I believe, at that time. But Mayor, if you recall, one of the biggest meetings we had when the thing first got started was in John Pavone's garage, which you were in attendance.
Yeah.
The only time it got contentious was when one citizen stood up and said, "Well, I don't know why we're even meeting. The city's going to do whatever they want to do anyway." And.
And I had to remind him, I get like eight votes up there in Country Club, so.
And so, and so here, here we go, and now perceptions are that that's exactly what's happening. And I would really hate, after all of the time that many of us have committed to try and do this way, do this thing the right way, that that indeed is what is actually going to happen. So.
I was just, that's not 100% fair, because I know we've had discussions, you know, originally we wanted a bike lane type sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, that's not happening. There's been a lot of changes that were from the properties on intersections. Nobody really wanted that roundabout there, or nobody really wanted the island in front of their property. So it, it's kind of difficult. People want these, but they just don't want them next to their house.
Well, you had 80-foot of right-of-way, so you can put it anywhere you want to, with the neighbors, somebody's going to be upset, I understand. But, but you don't have to put a roundabout on a corner. You can put that right in the street.
Wouldn't I, I don't know that you necessarily have to. That's the median option that we showed, based on some input that we got with circles. We said, what about another option? You put the medians in, kind of like what we did with the Heights, you know, on Cook Drive, there's a median there.
I'm thinking down at the Hard Rock. It's not in an intersection.
Right. Same, same thing, just the shape of the, of the island. So that was a concept we, we prepared as well. And again, so you have these three concepts of nothing, islands, medians. At the end of the day, somebody's got to make a decision. And, you know, they use the survey that the city put out to, to make a decision, and, you know, that's, that's how we got to wherever we were today. We presented those results in our October 15th public meeting, and up until this weekend is the first I've heard, you know, a whole, much more rediscussion. Everything since then has been, I haven't heard anything. Same, same, similar with the community mailboxes. We presented an option to have community mailboxes, because that was asked by a resident. I investigated it, I presented it as an option at the October 15th meeting, and vast majority did not want it, so we dropped it, and we don't have that in the plans.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that, too.
But how, why was that not, why did the neighbors still think that was an option to do?
I do not know. Because my minutes said specifically, the majority does not want it, we're going to go with individual mailboxes. So I, I'm confused as anyone why that wasn't understood.
What's the average cost difference to add a roundabout or a median?
Uh, you know, the paving, it might be $20,000, $30,000.
And then engineering-wise?
Yeah, I, yeah, less than that, probably, yeah. Provided we have enough survey, and, you know, you're going to reconstruct more driveways.
The thing is, you'd have to acquire property in some cases. Would you not?
Probably not. I mean, we looked at them at 40th Street, 43rd, and 44th. Those are the three streets. And the association wanted us to look at them at 40th and 43rd. I believe we looked at them at 44th, just because 43rd had steep driveways on the west side and make it, made it difficult, because as you do a circle, you push that curb line further west, makes their driveway steeper. So we looked at 44th as another option. So, yet, you're, you know, you're pushing your curb lines closer to the right-of-way line, you're putting in more paving, you're doing more dirt work.
Which, which streets again, can you repeat those?
40th, 43rd, and 44th. That was the original, and I'd have to look, I believe we, we kind of settled.
Why not say like where Perry Way goes in at the, the T? Oh, is Marcus C. still live on that house there, or?
No.
Okay, that corner, you, you know the corner. The next block up from 44th.
But those were the locations requested by the group, and we did evaluate. And we did start the design with that concept in mind, and then as we evaluated it further, that's when we encountered the, the issues that made us think that it may not have been the best option.
That's when Jade was here.
That's when Jade was here, yeah.
And, and I was involved in some of that. But I have some thoughts, but I'd like to hear what Mr. Weinberg has to say first.
Thank you, Councilman Moore.
I'm not conducting the meeting, Mayor. I just, I kind of want to keep it rolling, because I've, I've got some thoughts on all of this, and, and there's a, you know, there are two sides, so.
Yeah, Lou Weinberg, 3905 Country Club Boulevard. So unfortunately, a couple thoughts come to mind. My first thought, sitting over there, was why don't we split a red light camera with the city, and we'll take half the revenue, and you take half the revenue, and we'll all make money out there and slow traffic down, because that seems to work.
Director, it's not about the money.
Yeah, it's never about the money. But the fact is, when you think about this and design and public safety, either we are way ahead of all the other cities in Iowa, and most of the country, or we are still doing things the way we did them 20 years ago. Based on this discussion tonight, I'll let you draw your own conclusion. I think it's, we're doing the 20-year rule. I mean, if you're, I look at the councils being charged with public safety. I understand the engineers don't like to make changes in how they do things. It's much simpler just to run a gutter down there and have a nice pool with that little dinky median that doesn't slow anybody down. I can only imagine, once we widen the street, what the speeds will be. I think your traffic study that was done by the City Police Department makes it pretty clear, and it will speed up. So, I mean, the burden rests back on the council, or the homeowners association ends up taking the city to court to try and stop the plant, because you have to do something about the speeding. The time to do it is now, not later, after we've had accidents, or after we've done the construction, it'll be more expensive to go back and do things. So, you know, I'd encourage you to, you know, think about this. Why don't we look at what's being done, you know, nationally in other cities in Iowa? You know, I like to think we're ahead of the curve, but in this case, I don't think we are, and we should be, or we should at least be at the curve. So I think you know the right thing to do. Hopefully, you'll come to the right conclusion. Thanks.
Mayor, I've.
Go ahead.
I have some thoughts on this, and.
Good.
And they're just, they're random thoughts, but, and first of all, that's why we have a public meeting, is to have, have this participation and find out what's the right thing to do. But I want to say, and, and I want to defend staff on this and, and DGR, but staff in particular, because we, we had designs drawn up for the, for the circles, and we've talked about it. And I went to a neighborhood meeting with residents on Country Club, and, and I, I was embarrassed, because I was all for the, the circles. I think they will be a traffic calming method on Country Club, but the ones I met with at, at the time, and everybody can change how they feel about something from day to day, I get that, but at the time, no one was supportive of circles on Country Club. And, and there's a, there's not a divide, but there, but everybody has an opinion, whether it's the circle, or the island, or leaving it the way it is, or to do stop signs. And so you're really getting a mixed message. Plus, Glenn, that's when Jade was on board, because I thought, Mayor, and these are just my thoughts, I thought, Mayor, that we were, I thought we're concrete, because up to 38th Street, it's concrete. Perry Way's going to be concrete. I thought we were going to do concrete. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we should bid asphalt as maybe an alternative, but I want to do it the right way, because.
That's how your bidding is, as an alternate.
Well, but I, but I don't want to get locked into if it's just a.
We're going to choose it.
If it's just a little, well, I don't know if we can choose it if it's not bid the right way. I mean, I think you have to, you have to have some guidelines, as I understand it, or we're going to be stuck, the council will be stuck, I will be stuck. I'll just stick with me. I will be stuck with accepting asphalt, because it's the low bid. And I don't necessarily.
That's not true, though.
Well, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily, just let me finish. I, I don't necessarily want to do that, Keith. I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to have to accept asphalt, because, and you can call me whatever you want, but I just, I like the idea of, of concrete up to a certain point. You go concrete all the way, you do concrete on, on Perry Way. Plus, as I understand, and I'm getting way out of my league on this, but as I understand, it's all flat. It's all flat, and I think asphalt responds differently to concrete when it's all flat, and you have to take them, so, Brian Wells, if it's bid right, I mean, if the specs are Brian Wells, if it's bid right, I mean, if the specs are written up correctly, where we can truly reject.
I said, I, I practice law, now you're practicing engineering.
I don't want to practice engineering, no. I, I, I don't want to do that. Gosh, that's number four tonight. But, but seriously, I, I, so we've talked about that. We've, we've been down this path. And, and I'm, I'm upset at, at that, that the residents don't think we're listening, because I think we're, we're trying hard to listen to you, but we, we are, we are on, if, let's just be real candid, I think we're getting some mixed messages, which is, which is natural to get. I mean, we're talking about your neighborhood, we're talking about where you live, and we're talking about the traffic that goes by it. So why wouldn't we get some of those? And I think it's, it's difficult to, to put that into what's the final plan, but that's what we're gonna try to do today. That's my comment on asphalt versus concrete.
Then make some motions, then.
Well, and on the circles, I, I mean, it was no secret that I'm, and I've told Brian this, I've told Glenn this, I've told Renee. If I were living, I'm not, I don't live out there, but if I were living out there, I would want circles. And you can say to me, Dan, that won't guarantee that it will calm the traffic. I get that, but at least it will be a step in that direction. Because I even said, I think I was talking to Brian, maybe it was Renee, and I'm intrusive, and let's see if that works. And if it doesn't work, then maybe we can put in circles. Well, everybody knows the downside of that is, you're gonna have to be tearing things up that you just put in. It's gonna be more expensive, and I, and I get that too. So, Mayor, I guess, I mean, just for me, just to get everything on the table, I, I, I would be for the, the concrete, I would be for the circles, and, um, what was it? There was another thing we wanted to talk about. Oh, the, uh, the drainage. That came, that was brought to my attention. How we, how we're draining the street, and.
I'd like to address that if I could.
The drainage?
A little bit.
Okay.
Uh, and you, you're right. I think with, I don't want to have to talk about concrete and asphalt. We did both. But when you've got flat, when you've got flat drainage, you set, you either set forms or you run off a string line when you lay a concrete street. You now do that also with asphalt. But generally, you can control your line, uh, generally a little better on concrete. And anytime you do set forms, or your intersections or whatever, your, your drainage around an intersection, you're setting forms. You're not running a, a roller and.
But why would that change, Erb? You, you gotta be doing curb and gutter to do asphalt.
That's right, I, I'm.
I mean, you're just doing, you're just filling in the middle, so that can't be.
I'm, I'm mistaken. I'm thinking of highway, where you don't have curb and gutter.
Right.
Uh, right, right. And if you've got curb and gutter, you're gonna run that exactly the same way you do a concrete street with, uh, yes, off of line. Uh, thank you for correcting me, Bob.
Okay, well, I'm not an engineer, but I didn't, I didn't think we were proposing.
No, no, no.
Anything with concrete.
Well, maybe we did, I can't remember what we did on 28th Street. Now, I wanted to thank you for that plug on 28th Street. We built that.
Concrete.
And that is one of the best asphalt streets in this community, but it has a hell of a good base.
Oh, yeah.
It was built to be competitive.
They did everything they could to make sure when they engineered it, that asphalt was not low.
Well, no.
But you were still low on the job, you, it's got a grate, it's got like a 12-inch base under it. I'm saying they engineered it to make sure we didn't get to use asphalt.
We helped engineer that. We helped engineer that, because we wanted to prove, we wanted to prove at that time that asphalt could work. And we, we think we did. It did work, but most of the time, engineers don't want to build a road like that.
Right.
And if you're properly engineered, it will work, but most asphalt roads are not engineered for city like that is. That was engineered more like an interstate or highway road was. Anyway, thanks for the plug. We appreciate that. I, I, I did want to talk, though, a little bit about the problems of grade on Country Club Boulevard. History. Country Club plat was platted by the Buckwalder Company, about approximately 1925, I think. I was not born until 32. My father built a house out there in 34. We ended up, and the Lidl Company ended up with a lot of lots. I think that things didn't maybe get paid. It was, in those days, you got paving certificates or something, and if you, and this is during, Bob, this is the depression. Didn't get paid, so you got lots. That's how you got lots. And so those lots, some of those were still going after the Second War, before they got sold. Anyway, the paving was done with no regard to the property owners, one side or the other. So one side, you got low lots, other side, you got high lots. Really, houses on those low sides should have brought in dirt, raised them their property. I live on Perry Way. I brought in lots of dirt. I got it for free, but I didn't, I'm next to the Perry Creek. I didn't want to get flooded. And so I've got good drainage there, but a lot of people didn't do that. So now the city is trying to correct what was done in 1925. Difficult thing to do to engineer. We've got a, on what I call the east side, you got low property, so you're trying to drop your curb on that side to get the water over the top of the curb. So then that makes a greater problem on the west side, where you got high property. I'm not trying to engineer the street, but you can, you know, break your crown, uh, but if any of you have driven Country Club between the little school and 38th Street, since it's been thawing and freezing at night, it's mud and water and ice there every night, you're building. If you continue down the Boulevard, you're gonna build a lot of tort claims if people have accidents when we have engineered ice on the road. I think it's dangerous. So, but I don't know the answer. Uh, that's what, that's what he's supposed to take care of.
So, but you're, if I hear what you're saying, you're, you're saying the difference is if there're not enough in the, in the, in the levels? Like if the west side is higher than.
West side's way higher.
The east, yeah, but if it's way, way higher, you might not be able to do what you're talking about.
May not be able to do.
With the crown.
Yeah, you may not be able to do it.
Depends on what the measurements are.
I don't know whether we can put inlets on the west side. You can't put the inlets there if you can't get a little fall to the, to the inlet. And I made some drawings, but I did show, I've got some fall. But he may not have, you know, in the, in the field, he may not have that luxury. He may have to, and so then I suggested something the DOT is doing now, in certain places. Do you want to give them to him? Give them to Wells? Uh, the DOT has done, and we have built for DOT, high curb on one side. You have to drop it at the driveway, but we have built high curb to allow, uh, you know, to keep the, hold the dirt back, and so that you can get, don't have to have a flat. The state doesn't like ice all the way across the road in towns where they, you know, say, um, Rockwell City, or some town that they, that state highway goes right through. They try to avoid not, not having sewers and intakes on both sides of the road. So if they have to, they will adjust curb. They don't like to, we don't like to build it that way, but it can be done.
Irving, can, Brian, do you have any questions what Irving traced out for me? Because I was really trying to understand this.
Right.
Crown.
Yeah.
Concept.
And Irving and I talked a little bit before the meeting, and I showed him some, uh, cross-sections that I brought with me that shows the elevation difference from the west right of a line and the east right of a line, and, and it's pretty extreme.
Put those up on the.
Sure.
If we can zoom in close enough, yeah.
No, you're not. I do too.
I was just gonna say on the asphalt versus concrete, you know, in the past, we had one bid on an outer drive, the shoulder project there, and the asphalt was less than concrete, but we went with concrete, because for the price difference, it wasn't that much less. Uh, you know, it's.
Last time you bid, it concrete was low anyway.
Yeah.
But did we?
Yeah, the last time.
So we didn't, we've bid asphalt and concrete since you've been here, and concrete's been low every time. But if asphalt comes in lower than the.
It doesn't matter. It's an alternate. You still get to decide. Can, can I ask, though, is, is life expectancy one versus the other, asphalt versus?
The base is the same.
If the base, so measuring it seven and nine, it should be the same.
If the base is engineered right, it's the same. Sioux Falls guys doesn't build a concrete street. It's all curb and gutter, back-to-back asphalt. But anyway, to answer your question, if it, it's different engineering and sub-base for asphalt to be equal in life expectancy to the concrete, correct?
And, and life expectancy also depends on maintenance.
Depends on the traffic.
So you took that into consideration when you bid nine inches asphalt and seven inches concrete?
Yep. This is, I mean, a fairly low-volume road. Um, so the sub, the subgrade prep is the same for one as it is the other.
Okay.
Now, if you go to a Jackson Street reconstruction, where you got 10,000 vehicles per day, you're gonna have a rock underneath.
So what is the life expectancy of either?
Um, I think.
Isn't concrete a lot more, or?
I think they use 50-year for both.
For 50-year for both?
Yep.
The asphalt street on 28th was 12 inches of base they put down to make sure that asphalt wouldn't be low, and asphalt still was low, and it's lasted just as long as the concrete streets that have paved, been paved at that time. But it's all in the base, and it's all in the traffic, and it's, anyway, but, but. Because the oil prices, now that could change, obviously, but so far, the concrete has been coming in much lower. Am I right?
Right.
But if asphalt comes in lower, you're saying we can.
Still choose concrete.
Still choose concrete.
Yes, because it's bid as an alternate.
If it's bid as a true alternate in the plans and specs, that's.
You'll make sure the plans and specs.
Yeah, the contract documents that are prepared is all work, except paving, plus concrete is, is one option. And then all work except paving plus asphalt is another option.
Right, and so we can choose either one.
So they're not classified as an alternate. There, there's two different bids there. Everything with concrete, everything with asphalt, two numbers.
And we can choose which?
I defer to your city attorney.
Yeah, so we have the base bid, which is all the, the sub-base work, and we have an option for asphalt, an option for concrete.
Well, you're saying option, not, so it's not an alternate bid, or?
It's one or the other. It's one or the other, and we, we would make that recommendation and determination at the time.
Okay.
Okay, what are you showing us?
Okay, uh, simply here, in an area where we have a lot of elevation difference from the west side to the east side, about 3.2 feet, um, from the west right of a line to the east right of a line, just like Irving mentioned. Uh, west side's high, east side's low, and also remember, we're widening our street from 27 feet wide to 31. And then we are widening our sidewalk from four feet to five feet, which is consistent with the complete street policy. And then the other major detail is the existing sidewalks that are out there through driveways are as steep as the driveways. They're 10%. We'd like to get those down to what ADA allows, which is within 2%. So you add all those together, and it's hard to take, you know, fit a normal crown section in a, in an area where you have the ground sloping from west to east. Of about 6,000 feet that we have to reconstruct, uh, at least half of it has normal crown, and that's on the south end and the north end, and some in the middle. There's 3,000 feet that best works if you slope it all to one direction. It'll improve your driveways as far as grade going in, and, um, you know, driveway grades are important, because if you have a steep driveway, you're gonna slope in the street, and you're more likely to get in a crash, rear-ended.
Do you have anything in that, Brian, that would, um, that would slow the water from going to the east side of the street where it would be standing, and then freeze up, and?
Well, I mean, intersections on the high side, we have intakes to catch the water. Uh, we have a few other locations where there's swales at the property line, that we have intakes back a sidewalk, graded intakes to catch that water. So, yes, a few days out of the year, when the snow melts, it's gonna drain across, like it did last week, and, you know, unfortunately. When the street all drains one way, you know, inlets on the high side won't catch any water. So it's gonna drain across. In the heights, we have, the majority of it all drains to one side, just because, again, streets are built on a side hill. That's the best way to fit it in, especially when you're making sidewalk ADA compliant and widening a street.
Like on 38th Street, or up to 38th Street, is that water not draining?
Uh, so what was built a couple of years ago, again, the west side was at least three to four feet higher than the east side. And so we flattened out the, the neighbor's Boulevard, so she could mow it, so it wasn't a dirt slope, and we're able to get that, you know, fill that height.
You're gonna have retaining walls on one side, and property owners don't want that.
Well, you would, and then driveways will get steeper, which, you know, these are well past, a lot of these driveways are well past anything you find in design standards that we use.
Yeah, so you have about thou, 3,000 feet, I mean, how much, so how many homes does that affect? How many roughly, how many residents?
Well, I, I would suspect about half of them.
Okay.
But again, by, by draining it all to one side, we're gonna make those steep driveways better. Flatter.
Well, and that's significant on the sidewalks. You said right now 10%?
Yeah, most on the high side, on the west side, those, yeah, you know, they're, they're matching the driveway grade. And we, with, we want to try to get those within ADA complacency.
All right.
You've got a good design. When we were, a lot of people were concerned about it, and Mr. Scott was there. I don't know if you were there, uh.
I was.
At the garage meeting?
No.
But you know, we have traffic, we have a traffic study, a speed study now. We did not have that before. So don't let that get lost in the shuffle of this. We know what people are driving. We're gonna build a better route. It's gonna be smoother, there's gonna be less side friction, and the speeds are gonna go up. So really, the only, medians are no good. They just narrow up the, narrow up the driving surface, and they serve no function at all. Matter of fact, it, uh, they're kind of worthless on a street like that. But, uh, I think traffic circles were do it, and if we find other places to put them, you know, and it makes some sense, but it will provide some traffic calming, and that's what we're.
Going out for bids.
Not medians, you're talking islands, that you're talking roundabout.
Traffic circles, yeah. If that's, if that's what we're, yeah, if we're talking about the circles at the intersection.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at for that? Or could you do that as a, as an amendment, or not?
Dendum? Uh, probably not within the bid phase, no. We'd probably delay it at least a month. Best case, we'd be back here in a month. Maybe a little longer. We had concepts, we showed, you know, geometrics, but we gotta put elevations. We, you have to look at changing storm sewer, you know, what impacts.
You're gonna charge us $20,000 to engineer that?
I, I don't know what it would cost.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's $20,000 worth of construction, I would hope it can't be $20,000 worth of engineering. I know you.
I don't know.
I know you always think I'm critical of your fees, but that would be a little more than I can handle. But go ahead, one more time. We gotta roll on this.
Thanks. Sorry to take your time. I just wanted to have one final say that, um, we did say that we weren't happy. Once we heard there, I immediately responded when I heard that there was a new survey coming out. I said, why are we having a second survey? We've already had a survey. That was said at every single meeting. The council has said that we have wanted traffic calming features. This has not gone away. We've brought it up time and time and time and time again. And as I said, I think a lot of people did not respond to the second survey, because they figured that our voice should have been heard on the first survey. We had over, it was either 53 or 54 people out of the residents, which was over 50% that wanted something to slow the traffic. Uh, traffic circles were slightly higher at that time. That's been a couple of years ago. We have new residents, but I'm saying that I think that our survey should be the important survey. 300 people, you had 100 people respond. That's a third of the people that you sent the survey to. We had over 50% of all this survey, so, um, that is a concern, and please listen. We didn't have the speed, the speed study. Thank goodness for Dwight asking to have that done. I think that's pretty black and white, if there's anything that's black and white. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Greg Gregerson. I'm at 4500 Country Club Boulevard. I have a couple of, just really quick observations after listening to this. First of all, in Iowa, we have about six months of winter. So the fact that we might have a couple of days where the, the drainage across the road might cause a problem, I think is somewhat under-exaggerating the exact problem. I drive that street all the time. It is icy from November till we get decent weather consistently in March. And if you drive it right now, it's been wet, and it's been icy every morning, and it's been below freezing. So to say that we can drain the water across the road safely, and it only poses a problem one or two days a year, or a couple of days a year, is not accurate. Uh, I, living at 4500, traffic that comes off of King's Highway, or that north section, north of Hanford Creek, it starts accelerating right at my driveway, and that happens to be a bus stop. So if you really want to see the traffic flow and the traffic, uh, situation on Country Club Boulevard, head out there in the morning about 10 to 7, when all the kids are standing on my driveway, 45 miles an hour. It is truly a problem. My last, I guess, question would be, or I guess observation would be, Renee Weinberg has done an amazing job of keeping emails out, keeping everybody notified, keeping everybody posted in the neighborhood, and especially on Country Club Boulevard. And so as a resident on Country Club who lives on the street and deals with the traffic and has kids in the mix, I'd like to see traffic calm some way. I don't know how many people who have responded. I don't know how many people who have responded with do nothing have come before you and expressed their interest. So you guys decide how many people feel so strongly that they take the time out of their day to come down and express their concern that Country Club needs to be widened, that the speed limit needs to be raised because they'd like to go a little faster. And and lastly, it should be left up to the people who live on Country Club Boulevard because I do walk my dogs. If that logic applies, then I'd like to have all the tickets that I've received on Hamilton Boulevard dismissed because I have to drive Hamilton Boulevard to get to my house. So thank you very much.
All right, what's the council wanna do?
I think we should design for the circles, but I don't like the one-month delay. I don't know how else to do it.
I'm with Dan, I agree.
I think the majority of people want some traffic calming because they're concerned about the speed. I I would be the first to argue that speed causes accidents, and you've heard this before from me. Causes accidents, causes property damage, causes injuries, causes fatalities. And and the more traffic calming we can get, the less likely we are to have those issues. Every time I hear this discussion about speeding and how bad things are, I get a little, Henri, I wish Captain Riley was still here, that the police department hasn't been more active or involved. And and that comes from a personal point of view because I was there for a long time. I think they're really responsive and I hope that we can get them involved. I wanna clarify, I bring up the issue, I think it's important for the people who live on Country Club Boulevard to be able to weigh in. And and you don't have to work very hard to convince me about when speed becomes an issue. But I also want people to recognize that there is a lot of traffic on that boulevard. And and again, I would, I respect the fact that our Public Works Department and the city engineer took the time to to survey everybody who uses that roadway because it's important. I I would argue that typically speaking, and I saw it up at Cheyenne Boulevard when it had a 25 mile an hour speed limit and they brought the police up there. When we did the traffic study, the result was they increased the speed limit to 30.
And now they go 45.
And and you're probably right, Mayor.
And they get traffic.
Yep.
I see them shooting radar up there more than any other street.
I'm I'm not saying the logic makes any sense to me to raise the speed limit.
Because that's somebody, we have two police officers, I think, that live on the street and they seem to get traffic.
I can tell you all about it.
So I I think anything we can do to calm traffic is probably a pretty good idea. I know it messes up the plans here and the time schedule. And 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 I apologize for any delay from the October meeting. I was here at the October meeting and I know the city manager was and I think the mayor was. And I didn't, I guess I didn't get a clear feeling that that there was, you know, circles or roundabouts where the what they wanted. But but if it is traffic calming and we, a reasonably prudent person would believe that that'll be the result, then that's probably something we should take a look at and do. And if it means a month delay, I don't know what that does for the timing and how far it stretches out the reconstruction project, but it's probably something we should do.
Yeah, this project is a two-year project and we do have it strategically broken in the middle. And I don't know the exact location, that's Harvest Road. So that we can at least get the phases completed this this season. If we delayed a month, it'll it'll add more pressure under the contractor to get it done within that compressed time.
What are the phases on the northern, I guess they're starting northern and southern, that's right.
Well, we're starting now at 38th to 40th, but there's also as part of the Perry Way project, we're gonna have a section from 45th to the north section of Perry Way at the same time.
Where they're gonna widen that intersection so people can drive faster.
So that's all. Well, that messes it up then because you can't do that.
I mean, the roadway we're building is the city standard. So, I mean, the point about we're building a speedy intersection, I mean, it's the city standard.
I mean, initially, we were talking a 36-foot road with a bike lane. Now we're on a 31-foot road. And so, I mean, we've we've changed in those regards. I know.
I mean, this roadway is, it's classified as a collector roadway, not a a normal local residential because it does collect all those, that's why it has 1,700 vehicles a day, because it's a collector-type roadway.
What what does the council wanna do? We're gonna move forward here. So you wanna have it redesigned a bit later? Make a motion then.
A move that we redesign to take into account the traffic circles?
Well, how about this? Let's just say one traffic circle at 40th because then you don't have the people that were maybe agreeing with this. They didn't show up today. Because I heard quite a bit more comment over the time that they didn't want traffic circles on the street. So if you just say you're gonna put two or three without any kind of public notice, you're just kinda coming up with that on the fly.
There've been notices.
No, to be designed.
Right.
I I don't know what's gonna be designed, I just wanna make a motion.
Well, he's gonna need some kind of direction or he could just.
Glenn, how long is the stretch that we're?
6,000 feet.
6,000 feet? Is there any kind of formula with respect to roundabouts? That would only want on that and placed appropriately solve?
I mean, I guess, speaking of roundabouts, typically you place those where you have equal amounts of traffic entering in an intersection. You wanna reduce congestion. You wanna keep traffic moving. So this wouldn't be, a circle is kind of a, what we're doing here, it's a reduced size of a roundabout.
Okay.
So have a different function.
To slow traffic, hopefully.
At that, at that location.
Right.
But in between, you're still gonna have.
Can't act more like an entryway into the rest of the neighborhood though too, rather than?
But you might want a couple, Keith, you might not wanna do just one.
Well, you gotta remember still, the primary function of a road is to get point A to point B too.
The primary function of the roundabout of the hard rock was to not have people drive by. That didn't work, they're still driving through, at least they are going slower. But it's still a street.
Right.
And it's not our public street, but people drive on it.
Well, then, and that's why I asked the question, Mayor, because that's only a block long. Now we're talking over a mile.
Right.
And I, I, what's appropriate in terms of of a circle? Do you, do you need three to the two effect a calming, a traffic calming result? Or do you need only one or?
Can't my motion be broad enough that you'd have that flexibility to?
Yes.
To look at it?
Yes, did you finish it?
I did.
A second. Call the roll.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Aye, but Glenn will explain that. I can tell you on explanation what we're moving, but aye.
Braddock?
I guess so.
Well, I don't know if it's one circle, two circles.
So you're asking us to look at the entire stretch and determine where good locations are based on that?
And we and we've done that.
And maybe some input from the?
And we've done that.
Well, you know where they should go?
Yeah, 40th and 43rd is what they originally asked. And then we looked at 44th instead of 43rd because of the terrain. Because of the the driveway locations, there's a driveway at that T-intersection.
They agreed to. At where Perry Way comes off, because that would seem like if you're gonna do 40th and Perry Way comes around, then it'd come out on the roundabout too, that'd be kinda aesthetically nice.
I mean, there's there's another project Perry Way reconstruction that gaps. That's not part of this Country Club reconstruction.
But so that could be in the future here in the next phase.
Well, that's, you're gonna see that next month. So that one's pretty much final design as well.
So right now, you're looking at probably 40th?
40th and 44th.
I think that would be okay, but I, with the neighbors, but I guess we need to, I wanna get their feedback on that.
We've had their feedback.
They'll be here the those that don't want it next time, but I, go ahead.
I just wanna thank the council.
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
I wanna thank the council for taking the time to listen to all of this. I appreciate the, your thought.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
B is a resolution adopting plans, specification for the interior model, long lines, recreational center, auditorium, space project 401, Gordon Drive, move that.
Second.
Actually, we're in the.
We're on the consent agenda.
We're on a consent agenda, I'm sorry. Actions relating agreements and contracts, resolution approving an amendment number one with Olson Associates in connection with the 46th Street paving and drainage improvement project. And why are they wanting more money again?
13A.
Why are they asking for more money?
46th Street? So when that project started four years ago, we had a concept that included that pond on the north side or on the south side of 46. As they went through design, they determined the impacts. They could continue with the project, the scope of the project with improving the roadway and the creating and drainage in the roadway without impacting that pond. We met with the property owners that have that pond on their property, they own that. And for the city to go in and do anything with the pond, we need, we would need to get an easement from them. They wanted to preserve the the na- the natural look of that area with the pond on their property. And so if we were to do anything, we'd have to go in there and dredge that out. But so the consultant did some additional work that was not part of their scope, doing evaluations as as it related to all the impacts from that pond. They did additional bores to determine the soil conditions. And so that's the additional costs associated with.
But they've already done it.
Right, but it wasn't part of their original scope.
Well. Okay, no, I'd I'd like to vote no on that. What do you wanna do? You wanna, they should come before they get here. That's my complaint, they should come before here. And and you just found out that the property owner wasn't too excited because I heard from the property owner like two weeks ago.
You heard from the property owner?
Yeah. Where you were gonna dump the water and you were gonna have to go up and do a whole bunch of cleaning out and dredging and everything else.
Carrolls, you spoke with them. So, I mean, it was part of the evaluation. We weren't, at the time, as they were evaluating, we didn't know where the project would go if we would include it or not.
Your engineering committee, you guys discussed this and so you know about it? Because I'm uncomfortable giving them, after they've already done the work, voting for a change order.
This one we didn't discuss.
Okay, call the, I'm gonna vote.
You're pulling 13J?
13A.
13A. Done the change order for 8920?
Not the amount, it's, they've already done the work and now we're here for a change order.
They've done some of the work, they haven't done all of the work.
So somebody.
So what's the new scope of work that was not there before? That's.
They're not gonna dump it to a pond, they've gotta engineer the actual waterway. They've got a storm sewer.
So so it will do additional soil boring on 46 now that they've gotta look at the soil condition adjacent to the pond.
Basically, they engineered this thinking they would convince the property owner to let him do what they wanted to do.
I think the original.
It didn't work, they never talked to the property owner ahead of time. That's that's the gist.
That may have been part of the original scope.
Exactly.
Three, four years ago.
And they should have talked to them from the very beginning before we got this far, that's my complaint.
So so is that why it says modifications to the adjacent detention or to the down or to the detention pond were not feasible? Because nobody talked to the owner?
No.
Or was it something else?
I mean, that detention pond is, has DNR inspections and so they rate that as a dam. And so.
That that was built part of Young Blade's housing deal up there.
Correct.
It was always meant to drain.
I don't know if the staff that drafted the the scope of work at the time had that information available to them.
My, that's my whole point. Why didn't we talk to the property owner first to see if he was even willing to allow this to happen? That's my complaint.
I can't answer that.
I don't think I was either, must be Keith's fault, he's the only guy. The one I'm putting on him. Okay, where are we at?
It was only three years ago.
Can we call the roll?
Separate vote on Olson Associates. Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
And Capron?
Aye.
Next is a resolution.
Mayor?
Yes?
We need to delete item 12A.
Moore?
Aye.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
B is a resolution approving consulting services agreeing with JEO Consulting for the Western Hills, Indian Hills Preser- Pressure Zone and Tank Demolition Project. C is a resolution awarding a contract at INA for the 2016 annual storm inlet rebuild. I'll move to amend that to strong, I think it was, because there was an error on how they put the bids together, correct?
No, this one is the, the low bid is still INA construction, it's just, yeah, the total dollar amount changed.
Okay, the dollar amount changes too.
Which changes to $129,403.
So we don't have, we don't have to do anything with C?
We have to vote on the amendment.
How much? Oh, is it 129?
We have to vote on the amendment, right?
Correct.
Call the roll, please.
We have a second?
I second it.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
D is a resolution approving an amendment number one with Russ Consulting in connection with the case of Kathleen Schweitzer versus the City of Sioux City. Like a roll call on that.
Scott?
No.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Braddock?
No. E is a motion authorizing negotiations with ABM Parking Services, forming a contract for parking ramp management services. F is a resolution granting permit to fibercom for underground cable from Stone Avenue to South Mulberry Street to 1520 Morningside Avenue. G is a resolution granting permit to fibercom to underground cable along Sergeant Road. From Sergeant Road to and South Lakeport to 4700 Sergeant Road. H is a resolution granting permit to fibercom for underground cable from 8th Street and Floyd Boulevard to 620 Floyd Boulevard. I is a resolution granting a permit to fibercom to underground cable from Humboldt Avenue and Harbor Drive to 5550 Bradley Street. J is a resolution approving an amendment number three with connection with the Clifton Street paving and utility improvement projects. Why did they need one here?
So their original agreement was to perform construction administrative services within the original timeframe of the contract, which was to have the West Clifton completed in the in December of 2014. The contractor went into the spring and summer of 2015 and so that additional time to have Olson Associate Associates on site is the purpose of this amendment.
And how much of the damages that we haven't settled with the contractor yet, right?
Correct. I mean, that's, that's in, we're working with legal on that.
And how much of the, are the, how much are the proposed fees for the, for the damages? We have no idea, but yet we're gonna pay the engineer.
I think based on the number of days that we had, I believe it was 19,000.
It would be interesting to see how we settle then. Okay, where do we go to on the consent?
That was J, so you'd be on K.
No, but where do we go on the consent? 16, right. K is a resolution awarding to, now, here's where I gotta.
This is the other amendment.
Right. Awarding to RP Constructors LLC.
No, this is.
Well, it's a strong construction for 2015 annual curb and gutter project to be amended with.
It's still strong construction, it's just, again, there was a, an issue with the tabs in the rounding of one of our bid items. So the the total numbers, the total dollar.
Not being smart, you got a bad spreadsheet or something?
Yes.
Is that the problem?
No, in the first one, it was the cell tabulation, the cell.
Okay.
Formula, in this one, we had a decimal that didn't show up when we converted it over into our bid schedule.
All right, I'll move the amendment.
The amendment would be for the dollar amount of $37,511.60.
Second.
Yeah.
Say 50 bucks on that one.
Call the roll.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. 14th, actions relating to property, A is a resolution authorizes certificate of.
Second.
No, you're right. B is a, I wanna get out of here. B is an urban revitalization resolution accepting application for property tax exemption improvements made to properties located within the urban revive zone or areas. A, one is the City of Sioux City Urban Revitalization Area 1 and 2 during calendar year 2014.
I did wanna ask, what is the plan on that 401 Pearl Street? Do you have any kind of proposals put forward?
A bar.
Charlie Cowell Planner. Yes, they're going through the Design Review Committee process right now to construct a new building on that site and will have to go back to the store president. And we'll have to go back to the store preservation commission for recommendation for that new construction as well. Right now, they're proposing a restaurant and bar.
Jeff Conley.
Two is the City of Sioux City Urban Revitalization Area Schedule Two during calendar year two thousand thirteen. Three is the City of Sioux City Urban Revitalization Area Schedule Two during year two thousand twelve. Four is the Greenville Kelly Park Urban Revitalization Area Schedule One during calendar year two thousand fourteen. Five is the City of Sioux City Urban Revitalization Area Schedule One, Two, and Three. Six is the Greenville Kelly Park Urban Revitalization Area Schedule One, Two, and Four. Seven is the Hamilton Wesley Two Urban Revitalization Area Schedule Two. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list. Do you have any questions, come forward. Sixteen received amendments, see the list. Do you have any questions, come forward. Everybody vote? Passes five zero. Seventeen are recommendations of planning and zoning or seventeen hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of Christie Road adjacent to fifty-five hundred, fifty-five oh one Christie Road. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move that.
Second.
Yes, sir.
These items were heard and unanimously passed, there was no opposition, it's just part of the development that we needed to vacate.
I'll move first reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
They already moved it.
Well, they can still be heard. Oh, we already moved it.
They already moved it, yeah. I jumped in with a second. See. I just seconded it, already seconded an item. No, I'm confused.
Passes five zero, anyone opposed to waiving the rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Reddick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye, I'll move second, third.
Capron?
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Aye.
I've had enough today. Thank you for correcting me.
Sorry.
For the mayor down.
Passes five zero. Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of Fairfax Street adjacent to three thousand nine Lyle Lock Lane. P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move first reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
Plans are reviewed, unanimously passed, just identified that a piece of property need to be vacated on an existing site. But they, and through their due diligence, they found it, and so we did it.
Anyone oppose at your meeting?
No, I don't think so.
I didn't think so either.
No, the first two items, I don't think there were any, there was any real discussion about those.
Five zero, is anybody opposed, is that waiving the rule?
No.
Second, I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Reddick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
See, there's no concrete or asphalt involved in these ones, so these ones go fast.
Thank you.
I just wondered, I was glad Mr. Moore stepped out of his comfort zone and started engineering things. Made me feel good. Passes five zero. Nineteen is a resolution approving a final plat for Ramirez addition, P&amp;Z rec...
Piece of ground that he owns. It's currently platted, but it was platted under the old zoning code. And under the new code, under the new code, this is now an NC two district. And so the current plating does not match the code, and so there's a replating taking place on this ground. That came forward, but there was significant discussion and opposition from the neighbors in the area concerned about what this might do as far as changing the, the, the scope of the neighborhood. Most of the lots are fairly large and there's some ground around it that's pretty open. They want to keep that sort of feel to the neighborhood and they raised their concerns and objections. I think ultimately the, and there wasn't a lot of discussion among the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think the general consensus was that this individual's within their rights asking for the plat land. It's, it's in a zone that allows for larger lots as it is. And, and so we, we, I think that was the general consensus from, from the, from the commission. But I know there are a number of neighbors present in the meeting today, so...
How many lots were there before?
I think, I wanna say, was it four?
Do you have a before, we don't have a before picture, do we? If you could show us how, how was it laid out previously? Or maybe that's what the, I don't know if that's what the dash lines are or not.
There's one big piece now.
It was just one big piece, wasn't it? One big parcel?
No, it was, as I understand it, it was not one big piece. It looks like one big piece when you drive by it, I drove by it here this last week. It looks like one big piece, but it's actually is broken up now.
Anyone to be heard?
My name is Carrie Hall, I live at twenty-four thirteen West Twenty-second Street. I never did receive notification about this because I was outside of the notification parameter. So I understand that now, I didn't understand that at the Planning and Zoning Committee hearing. I just want to say that I bought, I purchased a house on this street in November and because of the aesthetics of the neighborhood, we actually vetted the neighbors because we wanted a safe place to live. The land is, all of our neighbors basically have big yards. It's, the properties are big, we like that we have deer in our yard. There's several concerns from...
You're not feeding the deer, are you?
No.
Where, can you point out where her home is too on, on the...
What's that now?
Can you point out where the location of her...
Probably better if they did it, they're going through and checking this, I don't have access.
I am clear at the top of the street, last property.
Yeah. They're ju, she's right, they were just outside of the notification, the notification.
You're north of that?
Correct. I'm at the...
Not immediately north, but further north.
Very last house on the dead end street, it's two acres. East.
Which?
I'm not sure I've got the right house.
Do you want me to point to it?
Sure. Maybe that map's not big enough, I don't know.
What's your address?
Twenty-four thirteen, I think it's right here.
You get twenty-four thirteen, hold on. I just wanna kind of...
West Twenty-second.
So you're, you're east and north.
Right.
You're over here, so, okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
There's several concerns from a lot of people in the neighborhood, some of them are here protesting silently, some of them you're gonna hear speak that have been there for decades. I, I mean, I've just been there a couple of months, but I mean, even the fact that the water main runs down Castleman and our, we don't have any water pressure at our house. And really, aside from spending probably twenty grand, there's nothing to do about that. Now add four, four more properties and four more houses on that street, which is considered a rural route. I don't know what that will do to the neighborhood. I leave for work every morning around in between seven-thirty and eight, it is impossible to get off of our street because West High is right there. It is really poke your nose out, hit the gas and pray. Now you're talking about adding three more houses to that, that land, which isn't very big. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's point seven five acres.
I, yeah, I wish I could pull it up, they're having technical difficulties because I don't have the...
I think it's somewhere around point seven five acres. It's considered a safe neighborhood now, everyone knows each other. Like I said, the properties are value of the houses that they put on these little tiny parcels of land.
Usually it's good for property values to have some new construction in the area. And I don't know if the intention is rental units or to sell. What, what is the intention, that kind of makes a difference?
Chris Madden, senior planner, the intention is to, there's currently one house on the approximately thirty thousand square foot lot.
It's, it's point seven seven acres, yeah.
Yep, the petitioner intends to keep that lot and then sell off the other three. The property is zoned NC two, which is the equivalent of the old RS seventy, so the regulations on the lot...
Is he moving the existing house, though?
Correct, the existing lot would remain, the petitioners intend to keep that lot, the last I talked to them, and then to sell the other two lots, three lots.
If you're gonna do that...
He's not, did you say, is he planning on moving the house? No, he's not planning on moving the house. One of the lots would be, would cover, as, from the, from the presentation that I remember, one of the lots was gonna include the house that, that's currently in existence.
The RCA says lots...
Looks like that line goes right through where that house is.
The driveway? Or I believe it's a street, they use it as a driveway.
We gotta vacate that right of way back there too, by the way.
Steph did do an analysis on the average lot size in the area after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, when the concern about that the lots were too small and didn't fit the neighborhood. Within five hundred feet, there is fifty-eight residential parcels. The average lot size of those is approximately twenty thousand eight hundred square feet. Thirty-two of those lots are fifty-five percent or equal to or less than the proposed size of the lots in this subdivision. Again, the NC two zoning district would require at least seven thousand square feet per lot. They're proposing eight thousand two ninety-eight hundred square foot lots in this development. We also did go out one thousand feet, there's a hundred and nineteen residential lots within that area. There's an average lot size of approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet. However, sixty-four of the lots are fifty-four percent or equal to or smaller than the lots being proposed in this development.
And West Twentieth really is a completely different neighborhood from ours. I know it is just like right down the street, but it is, is a different world. When, once you step past that, it's all acreages almost. Except for the land, right next to the land they want to chop up, which was originally part of that parcel. So, in our eyes, we really feel like the separation of that, one little piece began the degradation of the neighborhood. And now we're all afraid that these chunks of land are going to be sold and then split up and possibly turned into townhouses, like the big property down the street. Which a lot of those neighbors, I wish they were here, could attest to the traffic and the noise and all of that that entered the neighborhood once that, once those were open for business and people moved in there. But I don't want to take up too much of your time, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm Emma DeHardy, I live at twenty-two twenty-six Castleman Street. And we'd like to keep the neighborhood, we all got acres, acre plot, half acre, two and a half acre, some got three. And like she said, the traffic is horrendous. If you want to go anywhere in the morning, you got an appointment in the morning, you leave before eight o'clock or seven-thirty, because you don't get out of that. And at three o'clock to three-thirty, you don't get into your driveway. And when they had that debacle, when they didn't let the schools out, you had grade school, middle school and the high school, you had about a thousand cars in there trying to get their kids to get out, and you couldn't get nowhere. And it should stay the same because you can't compare West Twentieth with where we live, it's completely different. You go, we're, that's, that's two blocks away, it's a completely different neighborhood, you can't compare it. It's no comparison whatsoever. One, if, if he wants to keep that house there, fine and dandy, but put one house in there, which leaves it like a, at least a half acre plot. Then he's got a, a fourth of an acre there. But we don't need four more houses. Are they gonna, the guy sells a lot, so, he could sell, somebody's gonna put a rental profit in, or whatever you do. We don't want rental profit.
But we can't, we, you can't, that, that, don't make that argument today for me, okay? You can argue lot sizes, but we cannot determine whether a rental house should go in or whether it shouldn't, you know? And let me just finish. I don't disagree with you at the traffic, I don't disagree with you at the lot size, but, Frank's been trying to sell those lots and he's got townhouses right on his sign, perfect townhouse lots. So, that, that's a reality of any neighborhood today under this new zoning. And we can't, that can't be the argument.
All right, well, I'm sorry about that, Bob, I didn't, I didn't mean no disrespect to you on that.
That, that means that people living rental houses are somehow different than others for me, and I don't like that.
Well, no, no, I, I don't mean it, I don't mean it that, I don't mean it that way. I, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not disrespecting anybody or didn't mean it that way. But, we just like to keep, keep it the way it is.
I can understand it, that, that I can live with. But, let me just, I'm gonna throw my two cents out here, first of all. I don't, I don't, I think it's too dense, and I'm the guy that voted for these behind my house, same type of lots. But, but that size lot is too dense here for me to vote. The rest of you can do what you want to do. I can live with two lots, he could have subdivided into two and I would have said that was a great plan. But, there has to be a transition when you do this, and unfortunately, he's transitioning the wrong way. You know, if he were this way, it might be, if you're on the other side of the street next to the other properties, it might not be a bad deal, I can maybe understand that. But, even in my neighborhood, you know, nobody wanted those houses to the east of us, except for me. I was one of the few that was neighbors who were not opposed, but, and it didn't hurt our neighborhood, in fact, it helped it a ton. But it's a little different here, we still have big lot sizes out here, this is too, too dense for me. So, I can understand why you had opposition to it. I, I would be for the subdivision if they went for one lot personally, but not, I can't go four on that small one.
Split it into two separate lots rather than four.
Four, I can live with that, but, and the neighbors still aren't gonna like it, but that still is a nice transition if you ask me.
It's better than four.
Huh?
It's better than four.
Well, then they're closer to almost half acre lot sizes.
Yeah, maybe about a half acre.
Can we do that here, or are we stuck? We're stuck.
Splitting the property into one, just one slid from one lot to two would not require any action per our subdivision code. The reason this is before is because it's three slids and four lots.
Okay, anyone else to be heard in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What could, what could he do before the zoning changes, though, again? You might have answered that, but I'm not tracking.
As far as the old zoning code versus the new?
What, yeah, what could he do before?
The property used to be zoned RS seventy, which would have required, or would have had a seven thousand square foot minimum lot size. It would not have changed between the old code and the new code.
This was RS seventy?
Correct.
Well, how come then he has to come here, because he wants to split?
Splitting it once, or splitting one lot into four, that requires...
Yep, that's the subdivision, yep.
So it wasn't, Pete, so it wasn't split before, I thought, I thought there was any indication that it had been.
It looks like it reads that the owner lives on lot three and she owned the property and she was just parceling out the other three lots and...
You can see the map here, the green lines are actually the platted lot lines as they exist today, it was combined into one large parcel. There's actually an old right of way that's running down where the current road is. But these, I believe, are approximately six thousand square foot lots as they were platted. I can't recall when that was platted, I believe the earliest reference I found to that subdivision was the nineteen twenties.
Is that house built on the, outside of its property line?
Well, again, everything that's highlighted right now is the actual property.
Right, but it looks like the house is outside of it.
It was built over, oh, on the south side?
Yeah.
That's assuming that that, 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 that line...
That blue line?
Okay, all right, I'm just asking.
I found that on occasion, those are, they're, they're, they're good ballpark, but not exactly.
So they were platted separate lots, but then they combined them...
Correct.
Into one, so now if they want to do more than two lots, they have to go through...
They're not following the existing lots as they are, as they were platted early nineteen hundreds. But those lots actually would not meet our current zone.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Camilla Porter, and I'm directly east of that section there. I knew the original owner of all the land, like you say, in nineteen twenties. When I bought my house twenty-five years ago, I met, and the current owner, she'd only lived there her whole life, she was the granddaughter of the gentleman that owned all that property. And so when I moved in in nineteen twenty, the plots that, my house, which is highlighted right there, was originally on the corner of Castleman and West Twenty-second. It was the grandmother's house, they had moved over and the city then plotted after the grandfather passed away, they started plotting the areas. My first warning when I moved in there in nineteen ninety was be careful of the street on West Twenty-second, a four-year-old just died three years prior to me moving in. The traffic was already horrendous with the high school speed, coming around that slight curve coming down the high school, taking, going south to Casey's, the speed was already having an issue with it. And that was my first warning before I even had children. When I moved in there, there was no sidewalks, there was only a stop sign at nineteenth and Castleman. So over twenty-five years, I've seen a huge progress of, we petitioned, and I know some of the neighbors got mad at me, but I petitioned for sidewalks to be made, and they were made within that ten, fifteen years after I had been there. As well as recently with the middle school going... after I had been there. As well as recently, with the middle school going in, they put in the stop lights, not only on 19th, but also on West 4th recently. So we've seen a huge, huge, tremendous of traffic now with the Los Hill School coming in just in the last couple of years. The issue has always been the same. We cannot get out of our street on West 22nd. It is like kamikaze. You have to really stick your nose out, and hopefully nobody will hit you, including the city buses and the, and the public buses. Everybody is just having a terrific time getting around from our corner, from the West 19th.
And I'm not trying to run, but we're gonna have a three-minute limit on this, because we're getting way over today. Can you tell us whether you're for or against it, the deal?
I am for, not as many. The four, there has never, that has been an open park for everybody in the neighborhood. That has been public, or, excuse me, that has been private property in the one house. That field, those open fields have been for use for the children. The people that have owned that property...
We, again, like the rent, like, we can't tell people how they can use their property.
Correct. But I'm just saying what it has done. It has been, it has been privately owned but public access for the kids in the park. I am for possibly one house. We talked with the committee two weeks ago. If the house would be put there to have it, to have, for their own sanity of the people moving in, to have the traffic go to West 22nd and not to go onto Castleman, because there's no way you can get traffic in and out of there. Already the trouble we're having.
Is there anybody in favor of the plan today? Anybody in favor of the plan?
You've got the engineer here.
Okay. Okay. Let's, let's give somebody in favor a chance to speak if we can, so we get both sides.
Hi, my name's Scott Gernhardt. I'm engineer for the petitioner. The owners looked at this for potential development, and they did contact city staff to determine what the zoning requirements are. And we laid out a plan to meet the existing zoning for the lots and laid out four lots, and the intention is three of the lots will likely go out onto 22nd Street, and the, the fourth will go out into Castleman, or they could possibly front on, or come out on the alley. But they are meeting the, the existing zoning, and they plan on building single-family houses and selling them.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Joe Swick. I live at 2525 West 22nd. I'm against the proposed putting four houses on that property. My wife and I bought the property we live at back in the early 90s, primarily because it was a different complexion of neighborhood. We have large footprints over there. I have approximately two acres where I live, directly across the street. Traffic flow has changed over the years with middle school and the grade school, as people have said, but when you look at the neighborhood and want to compose putting four properties on such small parcels, you completely change what we purchased and look at as our neighborhood, bought in a different area. We purposely went to that area because of the large footprints. And I just think it would be not a good situation to allow... Am I interrupting something?
No, go ahead. I'm just trying to get your location on the screen.
2525 West 22nd, directly to the north, directly to the north of that property, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I own where the house sits, and then you'll see where the arrow is. Yep. That's mine also there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep, the, the green and what's behind it there. So I've got approximately two acres there. Many of, like you see, many of the neighbors to other sides of us also have large footprints. And so I think by trying to put four houses on something very small over there, it's going to completely change the complexion of where we're at, of what this neighborhood is. And as one of the others said, it's really unfair to compare 22nd Street with another street that's designed totally different. So I guess I would urge the council not to split up said property that's on the screen now into four different homes. It would just be out of place in this neighborhood.
Okay.
So I'd appreciate you not doing that.
Thank you.
I'm ready to vote. I don't know about the rest of you.
Can you reset it, Lisa, or no?
Okay. So if we vote no...
If you're opposed to it?
Yep.
I think we've heard enough. I'm not trying to limit your comments, but I think, does any, okay, let's do it this way. Everybody opposed to it, the way the layout is, raise your hands. Okay? Everybody for it, raise your hands. Okay?
May I just run a few numbers that I've ran by? There were some statistics given out that I think...
I don't know that it's gonna change anyone's minds.
Okay, this, I'm not trying to limit your comments, but this is normally how we do it.
Well, I'll take some time to prepare. I would just, at the very least, like to just run through it real quickly. I'm not trying to get on anyone's nerves, it's just a matter of...
No, I'm just saying, this is how we do it when we have lots of discussions on an item. We hear the pros and the cons, and the cons aren't gonna be any more than what your neighbors have already stated, but go ahead. This is how we do it, and then we ask for a raise of hand to limit the time that we spend on any one issue, but go ahead.
I appreciate it. Strictly speaking of West 22nd itself, oh, by the way, I'm Brett Hall, 2413 West 22nd. I live at the end of the street. My wife previously spoke. I have approximately two acres at the end of the street. West 22nd itself, the total square footage is 550,208 square foot. The mean properties is 55,000 square foot, just over. The median would be 39,262 square foot. The proposed final plating would be just over 8,000 square foot. I'm just trying to express how vastly different these properties would be in conformity to the rest of the neighborhood. The neighbors immediately on Castleman, same type of situation. The average is 35,630 square foot. The median would be 38,466. The property in question is 33,000 currently, 33,674 square foot. Again, dividing that into four properties, you're down just over 8,000 square foot. One of the things we like to say is, it's country living, but you can still have a pizza delivered to your door. I moved in last November, after having looked all over the city. As my neighbors, my new neighbors have just recently spoken, one of the draws to this property was the size of the properties in the area. I, I feel that the proposed, proposed development would be catastrophic to the property values, because the draw of this neighborhood is the size of the properties. Chapter 24 provides the intent of subdivision, subdivision plating regulations, really to be to conserve the value of property, lessen congestion, prevent overcrowding of the land, and avoid undue concentration or dispersal of population. I feel that myself and everyone else here who has spoken has shown that the proposed plating would not in any way conserve the value of the property, lessen the congestion. I mean, it's, Terry is a heavily traveled road. Castleman is a heavily traveled road. And then on top of it, you've got the West High Drive running right down into there. Traffic can become backed up all the way down to 20th Street. It's nearly impossible already at certain hours of the day for us to get in and out of this street, compile more vehicles and traffic. It'll only be worse. In an effort of brevity, that's all I have.
I have a great deal of respect for the Planning and Zoning members. You know that.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, from what we've heard, that it was a 7-0 vote to recommend approval.
I think the reason, I think the re, based, there wasn't a ton of discussion at the time, but ultimately, the, I think what we're, I think what I was guided by, and I think what most of the folks were guided by, was that within this zoning, they're within, they're well within their rights. They're, they, they have the right. Now, you have to approve the subdivision, but ultimately, they're asking for lots that work within the NC-2 district, and the NC-2 district is one of the larger districts in the area.
I see. That's your reasoning. Okay.
So you're saying that he can't do it. The other thing that I looked at it was that on Castleman, he may want to build single-family homes on Castleman. From my perspective personally, I don't know how viable those lots will be for new development, but if somebody wants to purchase them, whether it's him, whether they want to keep control of that, or whether someone wants to attempt to develop, or whether the neighbors buy them from him to keep the conformity of the neighborhood, that's their, in my view, that's their right.
Right.
To do so, to maintain the, the sense of the neighborhood. And I guess the other part of it is, is that, from my perspective, more than I think anything else, is that, yes, two blocks south is a very different, it, it, it's not, it's only two blocks south that you see a drastically different arrangement. And I don't, and while I understand, I, I perfectly understand their concerns, but ultimately, I looked at the property owner's rights and the situation.
I appreciate that. That helps. Thank you. That helps. You can tell I'm struggling with this one, because I normally go with what P&amp;Z would recommend.
Yeah, and I'd say for, for a subdivision like this, this is probably one of the ones where we saw, we normally don't see this type of objection.
I gotta say, I think I'd be in favor of it if it was two lots, but seeing four and the congestion of the lots, I, I just have a hard time supporting four lots in that size.
We're voting now?
Yep.
My lot's about the same size. I can't imagine cutting it into four parcels.
Fails five to zero. 20th hearing in ordinance amending several chapters of title 25 municipal code to incorporate design standards for the Rose Hill National Historic District. P&amp;Z recommends approval. We need a motion to delete. I'll move that.
Second. I would like something to come up in the future, though, for Rose Hill. I just, it's gotta be something the neighbors can all agree on, I guess. Or at least AD 20 agree on.
It passes four to one. I vote no. 21's a hearing in ordinance rezoning the Rose Hill National Storage District to a zone classification HA-N. P&amp;Z recommends approval. We need a motion to delete.
Second.
Move it.
Or, yeah, I guess so.
I'll move it to delete.
After it's moved this time? Your habit.
See if the mayor picks up on that little...
Four to one, no. 22's a resolution authorizing a certificate of appropriateness with conditions to the historical Pearl District for exterior rehabilitation of the building located at 615 Water Street Historic Preservation Commission recommends approval of the item. I'll move it.
Second.
Charlie Cowell, planner. This item was heard at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting last month. The commission did recommend approval with conditions. We have a commission member here as well who can further explain the reasoning for the conditions, and then also the petitioner to speak as well.
Gentlemen, Dale McKinnney, member of the Preservation Commission. We discussed this at length. We had a nice presentation by both Nathan and Craig. I think the commission has seen a lot of buildings in Pearl Water Street area done similar to what they were proposing, but that all happened prior to a zoning change that came about in the spring. So the commission has made decisions based upon zoning changes.
Have adopted the ones that were being proposed. We don't have that situation here, do we, with...
Yeah, Rose Hill's a little different. It's a national historic district. Pearl Street's just a local zoning district.
So we have the flexibility to...
Correct, yeah.
To do something a little different.
We, we just made recommendations with conditions, and it's really up to you and how these guys present it. You're, you're the final decision maker.
I didn't have time to call you to ask you that question. I just wanted to make sure we weren't locked in and...
We, we do have code, I mean, our code has requirements as far as design guidelines are concerned, but as far as national standards, it's not a national historic district.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Berenstain, 412 Water Street. I'm here for Cal Ventures. I'm also here with Nathan Kalerher, who is with Plant Architecture, or Architect. The sole issue and the reason that, when I visited with Mr. Padmore late last week and then with city staff, that we asked this come out of the consent agenda and put it on the discussion items, is because of the two recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission. They were supportive of the project, as Dale had indicated. Our issues are that we would like the flexibility and the latitude regarding this property at 615 Water Street to be consistent with other properties in the district, including property that the petitioner applicant already owns at 412 Water Street. The two issues that are in particular of concern are the recommendations of Historic Preservation, which requested or recommended that the north facade have a glass front, which we're not opposed to, but we'd like the latitude to look at alternatives with regard to the north facade. And then also, the second recommendation related to some windows on the east side of the, of the building, as well as the south facade. And we would simply like the latitude to have clear windows on the second floor of that structure, as opposed to the slatted horizontal and vertical windows that were part of the recommendation of Historic Preservation. In addition to those particular issues that were part of the recommendation from Historic Preservation, we would like the latitude to be able to evaluate other design components with regard to the property. I'd like to ask Nathan to go ahead and present both the, all four of the facades quickly, and also talk about other alternatives, and again, request that the recommendation of Historic Preservation not include the latter two recommendations, as well as giving us the latitude to design with some possible alternatives.
So, so basically, Craig, it'd be without conditions?
Exactly.
Is what we're, is where you're coming from.
Yeah, and with, I'll just preface on the, the north facade. There was two alternatives presented, and the commission just gave a, a recommendation on the one that...
Right. Do you want to start on the, what would be the Water Street facade? We'll just hit them in order. It'll be easier.
But to be real clear on this, the design standards that are in ordinance would be complied with. They just want, you want the flexibility to, to maybe do something a little different? Is that, is that accurate to say that?
No.
Well, no.
No.
The, the design guidelines in, within the code call for replicating, for instance, the windows on the, on the east facade, replicating the original windows, as far as the, the patterns of the vertical and horizontal framing on those windows.
So, go, just stop right there. So, you want all these little windows, which now is a one window, and they just put a fake deal, I think, but, and they want the one on the right?
Correct.
Correct.
But that's not really little windows anymore, right? Is it just a piece that looks like it, or, right? And you want the bottom to look like what? Because that was, at one time, the original building was open.
The commission didn't make a recommendation on the first floor.
So it's just the second floor? Okay. And then, and then you, they want to do the, well, go ahead.
The only point of difference we have is, we want the windows on the right. The recommendation was the windows on the left, and we understand the recommendation, but we want uninterrupted view, a little bit more contemporary look, or a lot more contemporary look. Those windows made sense at the time when it was a manufacturing industrial type use, when you actually just want to look out the window and have a modern look. Aesthetically, basically what we're doing is we're getting back to the original openings. The masonry all remains as it would have been at the time that the building was actually erected, if we go to the next set of elevations. On the alley side, we actually had to piece this together with about eight photos to be able to see it this way. You actually cannot see this facade very well, unless you're way back on the street on a roof, basically. Same thing, we don't want the little tiny windows with all the mullions, just big windows. On the next facade, this one's probably the most dramatic transformation. You can see that it's blighted right now. And what we would like to do is one of two options. The committee, as I recall, made a recommendation, which aesthetically, I think all of us would agree with, to go with the glass. We want that. However, the owner has not yet committed to buying the property until they know effectively they can do, within reason, what they want to do. And thereby, they haven't, we haven't completed the design. We don't have a bid yet. So we wanted something that we felt comfortable, that we could afford as a second option. Both are dramatic improvements. I will say that it is the owner's preference, strong preference, to do the one on top. I'm just a little leery until we get further into documents, that we won't be able to afford that or not. The next facade...
The top one's consistent with the condition, then?
Yes. The recommendation is the top one. We're looking for latitude to do both. The recommendation is the top one, we're looking for latitude to do both. The next, probably equally blighted from the Wesley Way view, a lot of people don't even notice this building, but you'll actually be able to see it perfectly from Wesley Way. The building effectively has two fronts if you want to think of it that way. We will do a very similar facade to what is their current office at 412 Water Street, about a block and a half south of this, where we're taking out the infill panels and the...
I gotta tell you, I've hated this facade for decades.
The one on the left, right?
This right here on the left.
Hopefully that's the one on the right.
Team that cleans up that facade, I think I could vote for it.
Yes. But there are no conditions on the west facade?
There were no conditions as part of the recommendation on the west?
Right.
Or on the, other than the windows on the other facades.
Yeah, we made, we made no conditions on the north side either because they indicated they weren't in a position to make a decision on which one, that they were, the glass or the metal panels, and we just commented that we like one rather than the other, which is basically what you like, the same one.
Right. So there isn't any disagreement on the north side they can do either, you're not going to have a problem with that, so it's just a matter of the windows.
It's, the issue is the street front on Water Street and the second story windows and a single window on the alley as it wraps around the corner, so it would be...
Right there.
The one in the brick before you get to the step right there.
Far right, where the brick is.
So you're not concerned about these other windows?
No.
Just that one window?
You're not going to see the rest of them because it's just an alley.
Right, so you're only concerned about that window and the ones around the front?
That's right.
As we get back to the west elevation, the other thing we would like latitude on, which we hadn't discussed at the last meeting fully, was if you can imagine in line with the floor separation, which is the black line, a deck that comes out from that, black steel, black steel columns, aesthetically in line with what you see there, again, that's not a particularly historic facade, it's an improvement, but we would like latitude. I don't think the HBC would have an issue with it based on our conversation, but just to be academically honest, and we want to have latitude to feel free to do that, that's the owner's wish to have basically the capacity to walk out the second floor onto a deck that overlooks the creek. Also, it will look cool. On the next facade, there is one, I can't, nope. So with that, uninterrupted glass paint, if you will, as is shown in the renderings, and latitude to move forward with the intent of the renderings. Not following the recommendation.
I guess I don't, I don't understand why, you've got a lot of windows up there, I don't understand that you're going to impede the natural light with, I don't think it's an unreasonable request, I must be missing something, I think, I think they've given you a lot of latitude in all the other areas, so I think that they've been more than fair, but the rest of you may not, but...
I'm perfectly fine with the recommendations, the owner wants to employ to renovate this building, and aesthetically, I agree with Keith, in terms of how much better it will look both from Water Street on the east side and on the west side. I think anything, I understand the Rose Hill argument, and this is different, but if anything, I think the important thing here is for the Pearl Street Historic District to be able to improve the west end of the downtown area, anything that will help improve it, I think will lend itself to a much nicer environment in the downtown area, and I'm kind of still stuck on Downtown Partners the other day and make it look pretty, and this looks good to me. And if it looks good, and if you look, I don't imagine anybody would argue about the 400 block of Pearl if you look at the building the owners have down there, I think it's in keeping with that design and I think it'll be attractive to the area, so I have no objections to it.
Well, you're going to have to make a motion and...
Well, I'd make a motion, I'm not sure exactly how to word it, to...
That you wouldn't hold them to the conditions set forth by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Just remove the two conditions.
I would make a motion to remove the two conditions recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission and allow the, well, maybe that's all I have to do, and then the owner...
Well, what's the, what's the other window they're supposed to do?
Was that little window on the...
What they're supposed to do is put those little shit, little, make them look the smaller deal, I don't, I don't...
The issue with the mullions is there's really two, number one, is they're significantly more expensive than the windows that Nathan would propose, and number two, the view out of those windows to the south and to the east will be affected.
We've got one window on the south, not going to affect the view at all, and you're not going to have any less, the natural light's not an argument, now you may be able to argue cost.
We're not arguing natural light, we're talking about view, but the biggest thing also is item number three, which is something that Stuart, if he were able to stick around through that meeting, is aesthetic. It's something that not everybody is capable of respecting, but there's a modern aesthetic, the small mullion, small lights as they're called, or not modern. I'd also note that of the last 12 projects to be done in the district, this is why it's a district that's noticed now, it's all these cool projects like my office, like 412, like everything down to the bike shop, that have made this a noticeable district. What we're doing is in keeping with the kind of modern adaptations of historic buildings, or not even historic, just old buildings. It's not a noticeable thing to some, but to others, those windows make all the difference in the world.
Now, when was this design standard adopted on this area?
Well, there is, the design standards incorporated with the Pearl Street facade program, and then with the zoning code update in March of last year, they adopt, we adopted these, those design standards into the zoning district.
So will they qualify for the historic, or will they qualify for facade money if they're not willing to do what the Historic Preservation Commission asks?
Well, they'd be subject, yeah, to the design standards for the facade money, which they would have been previously under the old code as well, if they were receiving money from the city.
They what?
If they were receiving Pearl Street facade money from the city prior, they would have been subject to these design standards. Last March, we adopt, we incorporated them with the zoning code.
But in this particular case, council has the ability to waive that requirement because it's not a, it's not the same as Rose Hill, it's not a national historic...
It's a local zoning district, so the council has the final approval.
It's the last final say.
So Dale, you, the commission has, I mean, how firm are you on that condition?
You know, I, this is a touchy area, I know what Nathan's design standards are, I know what he likes.
I probably have you to think for them.
Penpoint, we're trying to keep a little bit of that historical touch in these older buildings, and we just felt like maintaining those mullions, vertical, horizontal, and those upper windows was just that little bit of touch to keep the flavor of what that building really was originally.
Okay, thank you.
And the rest of it, I, we're cool with the rest of it.
Sure.
What are you talking, cost difference on these windows?
Well, I can tell you on the last project, which is why we're efforting this, this time before they buy the building, which was the Ho-Chunk project on 615, it was about a $40,000 cost difference between the site changes, in which case the owner, this is why you don't own the building, if I can speak for you, this is why you don't own the building yet, this is why they haven't completed our contract yet to get our bids yet, is we want to know that we can get past...
Oh, 4,000 difference on these windows.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Okay.
It will not be 40,000, but it'll be more than 4,000. Again, the, any one thing isn't...
So it's actually $40,000 more for those...
For another project.
He's giving a comparison to another project.
We don't have bid documents to answer your question.
Okay.
The cost is a factor, the aesthetic is a factor, the view out is a factor, not talking daylighting, daylighting is a perception from the inside, we're talking about when you look out the window to have this big open view versus something that's chopped up into one foot squares. And it, I like the project, I think it's cool.
Somebody needs to make a motion then.
For a summary of what the code requirements are, the council can either approve, modify with conditions, or disprove what the Historic Preservation Commission is recommending. Council also has the ability to amend it back to the commission for additional consideration on what they're asking.
They do have to go back again?
No.
Oh, they don't?
The council can modify, but one of the options is that they, the council can send it back for additional consideration by the commission.
So if we vote no, then they will not be held to the recommendations of the historic...
No, you're going to have to make a motion that says that you're waiving the design conditions that was placed on it by the Historic Preservation Commission, you'll have to vote on that, then you'll come back and vote for this.
Okay, well Keith just...
Currently, the resolution is, where the council includes that they replicate the vertical and horizontal patterns of the original windows, and then the second item was leave the masonry and the north facade exposed with a glass skin. Those are the two requirements that are being brought forth, and the resolution is closed.
Okay, well, in this...
With the glass skin, is that...
No, they did want it, but they didn't know, Dale said that wasn't a huge deal, but...
So if I say, motion, I make a motion to waive the design recommendations of the Historic Preservation Commission, or to waive the design recommendations of the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission for the structure located at 615 Water Street, because you don't own the property yet.
Property's owned by Cliff Tufti.
I'm not, so that's the part that, I'm not sure.
Cliff, Cliff is actually the applicant.
Oh, okay.
So you're good.
So, yeah.
So if I, my motion is to waive the design recommendations of the Historic Preservation Commission for the property or the structure located at 615 Water Street.
Can I please correct something?
Sure.
The applicant is, Cal Ventures, the owner of the property is Cliff Tufti.
Is Cliff Tufti.
Right.
So I'll second that. But Cliff signed off on your...
Cliff did sign the application, yes.
Literally.
Do I need to, is it better to have a motion?
You've already made a motion.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
I do, second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second.
Yes.
It's clear what it is, doesn't have to say Cliff Tufti.
All right, okay, I didn't know if I had to get the applicant in there by name or not.
No, if you got the address, we should be fine.
For clarification, Councilman Greckin, would you still be wanting to approve the certificate of appropriateness in this situation, however you're taking out the two restrictions? And I guess I would ask for clarification.
Basically, the application that was presented as to the commission and as the original application did not have, obviously, those conditions, the conditions were added on, so getting rid of the conditions then would make, revert back to the original application that was presented.
Okay.
We have, the main motion is on the floor and then...
But you can amend first.
Well, he's amending first, so if we've...
We vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, and then we'll vote on the...
Are you ready to vote on the amendment?
Ready.
Yes.
Ready?
Aye.
Stop.
I thought we were voting here and I did, no. Sorry.
I'll restart again. Kayvin?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
On the main motion.
Okay, now you can vote on the...
I'm voting no because I don't think it's unreasonable, I would, I don't care about the north side, but I don't think it's unreasonable to put those windows in, I think that's, I think that says to our Historic Preservation Commission, it doesn't matter what you bring us, we're not going to vote for it.
Nicole, can you explain what a yes vote is versus a no vote for this main motion? It's just to approve it as amended, right?
You're for this, you'll vote yes.
Yes.
Because it's already been amended, you'll vote yes.
A vote yes would be on the amendment, so that means that the restrictions or the recommendations placed by the Historic Preservation Commission would be denied.
Okay, then I made a mistake because I want to vote yes, I thought we were turning down the Historic Preservation, so we need to reset that?
I've restarted it again.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on.
The amendment removed the recommendations, this is the overall...
Right, so you'd still vote yes if you're in favor of it then?
Yes.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended.
Amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Is that clear?
I think so.
Okay. I'm going to display.
Did it?
No, I didn't. They'd say, what the hell is he talking about?
It fails, or passes four to one, I vote no, again, I'm, I'm, I don't know why we have commissions, if we're, if we're, that was such a small deal to me in a building of this size and the cost of this building, and knowing that we're going to put some facade money in this building, you can tell me we're not, but we probably are, it's short sighted on our part to do that because there's just a reason, you had a good reasoning, I think you had good logic, enough said. Twenty three is a resolution approving amendment, number one to the 2080 agreement with the Sioux City School District in connection with the Bryant Elementary School site improvement, I'll move that.
Seven.
I have a conflict of interest, so I'm abstaining on this one.
Maybe I'll vote no. As late as you kept me here today.
But you're up for it, you're up for it and nothing with me.
What are you talking about, I haven't won anything today.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I got, we got to redo that, don't display it, don't display it, no, I got it, I have to abstain.
It passes four zero to one, I am...
I'll be right back.
Are you abstaining on that?
Yeah, she is, he made a mistake.
He's been drinking.
I really do not want to miss what's up next, but I have, I am, got to leave, I'm sorry, I'm way past where I thought we would be, so I'm, I can tell you, I'm all for what they're proposing, so you know, but I'm going to, Dan will be back in a minute and I will see you.
We can wait till Dan gets back.
No, I do not have any time. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You didn't even get to ask.
Got to say, that's the best part of the night so far.
We should have got that one on tape, that was good.
Pete, look that way.
On that last one, I do have to agree with the mayor, it's just, I believe I originally voted against those design standards in the first place because of the restrictions on property owners. I do think you need some flexibility on those two, so...
Honestly, I'm not, I'm probably not as in tune to historic value as maybe others are, and anytime anybody wants to aesthetically improve the conditions, then I don't want to be the one to stop them.
It's like with the other windows too, so it's not like it's ugly.
It worked, it worked great to two blocks south.
The youth commission starts their meetings at...
At 6:30, so they're at least... Have one of your little candy there. You want those or you want something else?
I'm going to toss one of those yellow ones there.
Here, I want to toss it. Toss it. Oh, we're so obsessed, okay. Can we get a play some disc golf here?
Do you want to wait till Dan gets back or do you want to start?
No, we want to wait, he's mayor pro temp, we'll let him run it, that makes him feel good.
Actually, go ahead.
That's right. Are you going to set up a hole in here for us so we can do a little toss?
Probably have a portable basket I can bring in.
I wouldn't mind doing that. No.
Can't they go ahead and start, don't you think?
Yeah.
You don't want to start without Dan, do you?
Well, it's not a parade.
It is, right? Oh, yeah, well, that's true. Well, we wouldn't start, yeah.
There he is.
Boy, I had to hold him off, Dan, it wasn't easy.
Oh, thanks, Pete. Man, I'll tell you what, we were itching, we don't mind staying here until midnight. Okay, good evening. Yeah, he's fresh. Yeah. Ready?
Ready, okay. Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, we have a very quick presentation for you tonight. This is something the park board has worked with, a partnership on with a private citizen and the mayor's youth commission on. Jordan Brumman came to us in October to the park board meeting and had an idea for a disc golf course at Grandview Park. The park board was very supportive, we also worked with the mayor's youth commission on fundraising for this project. Tavon Schmal will discuss the fundraising efforts here in a second, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jordan to explain the project.
All right.
All right, my name's Jordan Brumman. I live at 2410 Douglas Street. I'll give a quick presentation of the beginner disc golf course at Grandview Park. First of all, this project is awesome, because Sioux City is currently lacking any kind of beginner targeted, maybe teenagers or new people to the sport friendly course. This is designed for families and kids. It's gonna improve community health by giving people of all ages something to do, something to get out into the park, and it's a free activity for them. The location that we've proposed is the southeast corner of Grandview Park, near the water towers there. The course will, the course is a nine-hole course in the underutilized southeast corner of Grandview Park. I did a quick search, and I discovered that approximately 21,000 people live within a mile of this location, so it makes it very friendly to kids that can't get a ride to the park. Just a quick basket layout. The course will start and end at the parking lot, at the top of the hill. Makes a counterclockwise circle around the water towers. And then this is the detailed layout for each hole. Starting at the parking lot, hole one is just a straight, easy shot for beginners. The basket will be located down by the trees. From there, you will work up to the top of the hill by the water towers, have a straight shot with the water towers on the right side. Hole three is a nice downhill shot, and it's gonna be very short and very beginner friendly. Hole four is another downhill shot going down to the southeast corner of the park. Hole number five is kind of parallel to the road, working your way back towards the Abraham Lincoln statue. And hole number six will bring you back up the hill, right towards the water towers. Hole seven, again, is kind of on the left side of the water towers there, an uphill shot with the bushes in the back. Hole number eight goes across the walking path up towards the water towers, and hole number nine will bring you back to the parking lot.
Are the only improvements that you're making would be the baskets?
And tee boxes, which are just a concrete pad. And our Parks Maintenance Division will be installing the course as soon as we get the equipment ordered.
Need the concrete pad and--
A very small concrete pad. You don't need one, but for erosion and those types of things, it's recommended.
The reason why I'm asking, that was a great presentation you've given so far, but while I have it on my mind, Saturday in the park, the--
I've spoke with him.
That will be taken into--
It, it doesn't really impact what they're doing, and if it does, the baskets are removable, so we'll be able to pull them right out of the ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking more of the truck, the truck parking, truck traffic for the--
Right, I mean, there wouldn't be any obstacles, because the baskets will come right out.
You gotta buy your own.
It's just like the Sartoma Park one, it's something you'd supply yourself. It's total free opportunity.
Brier Cliff doesn't do the concrete pads on theirs, and I'd say like nine out of the ten parks I've been to don't.
Mm-hmm, and we have the, because of the Mayor's Youth Commission, we have the money to do the concrete pads, so, to avoid their erosion and the things that come with people standing in the same spot all the time.
And I'm assuming that this is all the Mayor's Youth Commission?
Yeah, they have their regular--
Or a few.
It's supposed to start at six thirty, so--
Oh, that's perfect.
Perfect timing.
Come on, I know there's a--
Just in time for the presentation.
Listen, I know there's a ten more out there.
And while they're, and while they're all here, we'll get, the ones we'll throw, we'll save Mayor's Youth Commission on them.
Yeah.
As a gift from Parks and Rec, right?
Maybe we could use the money to do like a second one somewhere else.
Let's keep it under $299.
The, you know, I talked to you about that location.
Go ahead.
Northeast corner where Outer Belt and Floyd meet, and it goes all the way over to Highway 75. There's a lot of city-owned property in there, and I think there's a great opportunity for a disc golf course in there. Part of the problem right now is that we have to complete the trail and know what that's all gonna look like before doing something like that, but I think this would be a great opportunity for a second. You could do eighteen holes probably in that size of area. Then it'd give us an excuse to grow some trees out there, too. And this is unrelated, but I still think there's opportunities for the Mayor's Youth Commission to help improve other parks, maybe sites for added dog parks throughout Sioux City, designing bocce courses for, say, like a Leaf Erickson, and maybe one at Sartoma, having a contest within the Mayor's Youth Commission to design those, and I just think there's a lot of opportunities here with, you know, people that are involved in maybe doing some of these sporting activities that guys working, you know, forty hours plus a week don't have time to think about, so.
And the Mayor's Youth Commission is very good at raising money. This will be the second disc golf course that they've raised all the money for, a hundred percent on both projects, so that's a good segue into the next slide.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll let Taven take it from there.
All right, our funding, we had Chris and Joy Boganreif and family. They bought the first and the second hole. Carrery Huff Law Firm bought the third hole. Gleason Constructors and Engineers bought the fourth hole. Guarantee Roofing and Siding bought the fifth hole. King Reince Prosser &amp; Co. bought the sixth hole. McDonald's of Suland bought the seventh hole. The Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission raised money to buy the eighth hole, and Suland Chamber Foundation bought the ninth hole.
How much are the holes?
Five hundred bucks apiece, and they raised a hundred percent of the money. So they did an excellent job, they actually had to turn people away because there was so much interest with this project.
Very good.
And it's great to--
The opening day of this, if you get a hole in one on seven, do you get like a free Big Mac?
Probably.
I'll be practicing.
Oh, but you can join the Mayor's Youth Commission.
And we'll have recognition for each of the donors on each hole, much like Sartoma.
So what is the average distance between holes?
It's gonna be less than 200 feet.
So this will be a great introduction to the sport, and then more intermediate players will graduate from this course, and they can head out to Sartoma Park.
Great.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wow.
Good job, Mayor's Youth Commission.
That's it? Good job.
All right, and they actually have--
You started off on the right foot by saying this project--
Actually have the check for us tonight?
It's awesome.
Wow.
So we will, with this, we will get the equipment ordered and get it, the Parks Maintenance Division will get it installed.
What's this, what's this check for?
This is the check for the entire $4,500.
We should get a picture of this.
Yeah, we can do that.
Are you getting a picture? You wanna, you guys wanna, you wanna come up here and get a picture of the--
You guys, we should take longer, more often, because if they're showing up with checks like this--
Yeah.
Jeez, I know it.
Come on up here, all of you, come on up, and we'll get a picture. This is a big deal.
It is huge.
Come on up. Just come up behind us, and we'll get a-- Scoot over, come on over, Keith.
Yeah, corner, boys.
No, up behind us, yeah, up here on the--
Come on.
You better stand up, accept the check.
No, no.
Oh, no.
We have council concerns and--
Yeah, we're not, dang it, we got a lot of stuff.
There you go, Dan, right behind you.
What's that?
Can you get it?
Yes, yes.
Can you see the check all right? That's the, that's the big one.
You got the cow trophy in front of Dan, too, that's not sure to get that.
Where's the check, are you holding? Yes. All right.
Great.
Good job.
Thanks very much.
Great job.
Proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any girls back there? No, all boys.
Yeah, they were involved.
Awesome.
Thank you for your good work on that. Citizen Concerns, please. The podium, name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Gary Goble, address 22852 Goble Drive in Sioux City. I have a concern about property that the-- I've got a map here, if you want to look at it. What it concerns is the, along Transit Avenue, there's large pieces of land that are not owned by anybody. Somebody failed to draw in another lot, so they call that adjacent property to the Transit Avenue. Even though it's fifty, sixty feet away from the property, and they are the, um, enforcements coming out and giving notices for us to come in, go out and move all the snow on that property, which is adding anywhere from 130 to 200 feet of extra snow removal of sidewalk, because somebody didn't draw in an extra piece of property there, they just left it open. I don't understand why--
Bring it up real quick, too, so we can all see what you're talking about.
Glenn, can you come up, please, for a minute? Could you meet--
We've also been working on this issue.
You already what?
We've met with other property owners.
I've got, one guy's out of town, he couldn't come, another lady's elderly.
Can you have a meeting with them?
This elderly lady's getting almost 200 square feet, 200 foot--
The issue is, this used to be a state, there's a rather large right-of-way.
There you go.
It used to be a state-maintained road, and I believe the state used to plow the, plow the sidewalks. When it was turned over to the city, the right-of-way, the responsibility of right-of-way and the sidewalks in the right-of-way falls to the property owner, and that abuts the right-of-way, and that's, that's what this gentleman is referring to.
If I owned a corner lot, I wouldn't have a problem with it at all. I understand I own, I need to clean off both sides of my property. But when it's 80 feet away from the, the street, I mean, it's just a fact, I would hate to live next to a city park. At that point, I got the responsibility to do the entire city park.
So, what do you suggest when we do on this? Can, do we have a meeting with the--
I think at this point, maybe Nicole can add.
Sure, we have at least had conversations with two other property owners along the stretch. I have not spoken with you, sir, and I did not catch your property address. If you could state that.
I got the first one there on Alice, 1829 Alice, 1823 Alice Street.
Your name and address?
My name and address, Gary Goble, 22852 Goble Drive. I don't, I'm land, I'm a real rent landlord of this property, and all of a sudden, my renters are calling me and saying, this property has to have the snow moved. We didn't buy this, rent this property, knowing that we had all this property to maintain.
What is the property address that's affected by transit?
I think it's 1823 South Alice.
Thank you.
Pretty sure what that's, the first one off Transit Avenue. I know the lady on the map there, the elderly lady that lives on Orleans is having, is really having a fit, because she's got 200 feet extra sidewalk that she's got to now maintain. So--
When did this come up?
This looks like it's city property to me.
Is it, just this year, is it, has it--
Well, what the issue is, it used to be made, it used to be a state road, and when it was a state road, the state paid for the snow removal. When it was turned over to a city road, then it became right-of-way, and per ordinance, right-of-way that abuts the property is subject to being snow removed by the property. This isn't a unique situation. We also have this issue on Military Avenue. As you head out towards Riverside, there's large tracks that homes don't even front the property, but are responsible for the snow removal on the back end.
I'm gonna suggest that you meet with Glenn Ellis, our city engineer, and, and maybe some of the other neighbors that are concerned about it, and try to write up a summary maybe for us to, to better understand exactly what's happened, what's taken place. Anyone else, citizen concerns?
Hi, my name is John Reese, and I have some concerns.
What's your address, please?
3109th Street, corner Ninth and Ellis. And I've got some concerns, Ellis runs into a dead-end street on, going up, off Ninth, going toward like 10th, it would be. There's a lot of traffic that they just speed right on down past that intersection. I was just asking and see if maybe you could put yield signs up, both directions there, on the Ellis side street, on the corner Ninth and Ellis.
Well, that's the city manager, can we have--
Put up what?
Yield signs.
Yield signs.
I'll work with-- Traffic engineering, determine what we can do.
Okay.
Maybe that would help a little bit, because they just speed right.
Why don't you get your name and contact information to Mr. Ellis there as well?
Okay, I had another issue, they, when it rains out, last year, the city come out and filled in, coming down Ellis Street, there's a hill, and it comes right off the curb, runs right in my yard and worsens it out. They come out and put some dirt in there and put some seed in there. I filled it in previously in the years, and this year here, I called them just before winter, and they come out and did it. But it keeps worsening out, because it jumps the curb, probably because they blacktopped it before, you know, which was good. But it's, it's getting higher to the curb, and it's jumping right over the curbs and just worsening in my yard, like, you know, the four feet of it.
We take a look at that, too?
Yeah, if you'll get your information to Glenn Ellis.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. Any other citizen concerns?
Patience Award today.
Yeah, council concerns, Mr. Greckin?
I have none.
Jeez, I do.
Everything's--
Look at this, we got a big crowd out here today. This is great. And it's Mayor's Youth Commission, and here you are. I bet you, I bet most, most of you guys haven't even seen a council meeting, have you? Well, you're in luck. So I do have a--
We're wrapping it up.
We're wrapping it up, though. I do have a council concern.
That might difference your luck in high school.
I got a phone call this, this afternoon from, from a girl, she's 76. And she has a handicap sticker, and she has a season ticket to go to Tyson, and evidently, people are parking in the handicap spots at Tyson. And they shouldn't be. So is there something that we, and also the, the fire lanes. People are, they park wherever they can, and the fire lanes are--
I'll bring it up with the Vent Center staff and see if it can be patrolled.
Okay, and, and on the other side of it, I'm thinking that maybe, I know Rita Donnelly has volunteers--
Volunteers, I was gonna tell you that.
That go out from the police department, so maybe she might be, but this is at night, so--
Yeah, I don't know if they have any. But just as a general tidbit of information that people should understand, if they are parking in handicap parking zones, it's a $200 penalty.
I know it, and I'll tell you what, anybody that parks--
It's an expensive ticket.
Well, they deserve to get the ticket. Well, they deserve to get the ticket. I will not feel sorry for anybody that gets a ticket in a handicap parking spot. So you can pass that out, pass that on because it's quite obvious that these handicap people need it and she just had, she just had a heart surgery and she had to park down close to the Hard Rock. So it wasn't a good, good thing, so, okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Anna.
With that Mid-American memo, I would like to see us somehow move forward with our, any of the 250 and 400 watt lights. The savings on those was pretty significant to change to an LED bulb. And I guess as they're going out, are we changing to LED?
No, we have a, we have a, Mid-American works on a plan where they're changing theirs out and then we're working on a separate plan for our own. But our goal is to get them all changed out.
Okay.
We can definitely prioritize the higher cost ones.
Yeah, because it would just make sense immediately if it's something like, you know, almost $500 a light, that's a significant save.
Yes.
Is that something we got today? Anything else, Keith? Because I haven't seen-
I don't think that's it. I don't know, I thought we could maybe draw this out another 20 minutes, make them all real boring.
Paul, you have anything?
I do not.
Mr. Padmore?
Excuse me?
Anything for the good of the order? Mr. Padmore and Councilmember Capron and I attended the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet Saturday evening. It was a great celebration, good recognition of students that did various artworks, so thank you for being there and it was a- It was a move adjourned? Second, second?
Second, second.
Reddick?
Hi.
Scott?
No, they just said-
Capron?
Hi.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
They just said it. We are adjourned, we are turning the floor over.